All right, where is my agenda?
There you are. I'm going to tell them.
That's mine.
All right, welcome to this meeting of the Milton Planning Board. It's our 20th meeting of the fiscal year. I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman, and why don't the other people at the table introduce themselves?
Emily Ennis, member.
Randy Lash, member.
Michael.
Ed Duffy, member.
Jane Petersen, Mark.
William Clark, planning director.
All right. The first thing to do is to approve the minutes of February 13th. It looked good to me.
I'll move approval of the minutes of February 13th.
Any discussion? We've got a second. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are approved. Now, we're going to meet again on when, Bill?
Wednesday, the 23rd.
At 6:30 in the Carol Blute Conference Room, right?
Yep.
Okay. And then we're going to meet again at prior to town meeting.
Monday, the 5th, that...
The high school.
Yes, 6 is 6:30. 6:30?
6:30.
6:30.
Okay.
Master Plan?
Now, we have an announcement from the Master Plan Chairman.
So, for those of you who were paying attention earlier this year, we had originally scheduled a meeting for April 10th for the next roundtable. That had to be postponed to April 30th because of some other events going on in town. So, our next round, Master Plan Roundtable will be April 30th at Glover School at 7:00 PM. The roundtable is vibrant and healthy mixed-use district, so we'll be focusing on the current business areas of the town.
All right. Now, we're at, we're going to have a public hearing, but we can't start the public hearing until 6:45. We're going to have citizens speak, at which citizens who want to say something pertinent to the board business, but not having to do with the definitive subdivision that we're going to have a hearing on later, are happy to be heard. And we have a citizen. Why don't you come up and join us?
Thank you, Mr. Ward. So, I'm here because I'm on the agenda. I realize that the Temple issue is a very important item, and I'm here because there's also another item on the agenda that is a very important item to this town. My name is Bob Sweeney. I'm president of the Indian Cliffs Association, which is the abutting neighbor of the Milton Town Farm. In 2008 and 2009, I served on the Governor Stoughton Land Trust Committee, whose charge was to come up with the best use of the land. Following that, I spent three years as a trustee of the Governor Stoughton Trust. And my first choice was the Copeland Foundation. It was money in the hand to me. It was preservation. It was historic renovation of the Men's Arm House, and a lot of other items that I thought were beneficial to the town. However, that was not the majority opinion of the trustees. We moved forward. We selected Polty Homes of New England. And specifically, we selected Plan C for Polty. In their Plan C, the trustees kept four acres, and Polty acquire, is scheduled to acquire 30 acres. And I just want to read what that is so that people will understand. There's a purchase and sale agreement that's 24 pages in length. It's followed by two addendum pages, which was Plan C that the trustees chose. And that says that Polty Homes of New England LLC will adhere to the Milton zoning bylaws governing residential A, in which the property is located, and will not require zoning relief. We propose to build a single-family community utilizing the Cluster zoning bylaw, consisting of 23 lots, to be situated on a 30-acre apostle. The homes will be designated using classic New England architecture to complement the historic nature of the property. That was what was accepted, and I'm here tonight to say that there's rumors and there's growing concerns about what's going to be done on the town farm. I think some of those concerns are now arising because of the town meeting. There's a proposed cluster development. Those rumors are saying that there's concern that there'd be more housing units, that density would be increased. So, I, what I'm asking, and we were at the Conservation Commission walk site through, well-attended last Saturday. Some of us were at the Conservation Commission again last night, and I want to give the Conservation members credit for exercising due diligence in the matter, and I'm glad to see that there was representation there from other neighbors, specifically Quist at Brook. I think what we're asking is for our elected and appointed officials to adhere to the purchase and sales agreement that was hammered out. 24 pages in length, two extra pages, which was the exact plan. We want promises kept. I think that we're asking for full transparency. We want straightforward answers. And we feel that the Milton Historical Commission, which, incidentally, the first committee that I worked on, and we spent two years doing this, our primary recommendation was, primary recommendation was to have an immediate, have the trustees develop an immediate action plan, to preserve the existing structures to the extent possible, and to seek a sum of money that would benefit the four of the town. In the coming months, I think that there should never be, if the issues of safety, potentially if an issue of safety is raised, or an issue of quality of life could be compromised, or the property values could be compromised, we're saying that we would like our appointed officials and our elected officials to indicate to whoever they're negotiating with that safety, quality of life, property values, they're not a negotiable item. Thank you.
Okay. We have received from Polty a preliminary subdivision plan, and the purpose of the preliminary subdivision plan is to freeze the current zoning in place for development of the property because there is a amendment to the Cluster bylaw, which will be on the warrant in May. And by filing this plan, if a subdivision plan resulting from it is eventually, a definitive plan is filed, the zoning in effect prior to any zoning change would control. The zoning change proposed would make cluster development more flexible, easier, and probably result in a better plan than is possible under the current Cluster bylaw, but a perfectly reasonable plan can be developed under the current bylaw. The proposed bylaw does require 10% affordable housing, and affordable housing means that the people who live there can make no more than 80% of area median income, which is approximately $64,000 for a family of four. And it has been, the zoning would permit two of the buildings at the town farm to be renovated for use as affordable housing and preserved on the town farm because they are historic buildings and they need a use. In any event, this is something that can be discussed. If Polty proceeds under the prior zoning, this particular provision would not take effect. So, I hear Mr. Sweeney, and I think everyone on the planning board wants to make sure that the development at the town farm is something that the town can be proud of. So, anyone else for citizen speak? Yes?
Margaret Donovan, 41 Central Avenue. Here to speak about the parking issues at 36 Central Avenue. However, I see that it's on the agenda. It's not listed as a public hearing, but I would be willing, because I plan to stay here throughout the meeting and when that agenda item comes up, and so I can wait until then to make my comments.
All right, that's fine. That, I think, is productive. Now, Bill, what do we have on the immediate docket, other than our public hearing?
That would be the first one. You could actually do the Polty, just, you've accepted the plans.
Well, we, we, they've given us a plan, and we acknowledge receipt. We don't need to do anything more than that. As I say, the plan creates, I think, two lots, and its sole purpose is to provide for a zoning freeze. And I might add that in the proposed zoning that we are, that the town meeting will be hearing, there is a specific provision in it which would allow Polty to proceed under the prior zoning if that was its, if that was its preference. So...
Alex?
Yes.
By accepting the preliminary plan, are we starting any clocks ticking?
We're not, we're not accepting it. We're acknowledging receipt of it. A preliminary plan doesn't need to be acted on, or if it's not acted on, there is no consequence. We, I don't foresee that we're going to act on this preliminary plan. We know what it's been filed for, and, as I say, they aren't seeking our advice about their development. They simply want to freeze the zoning. But that comment gets us to 7:45.
6:45, I hope.
6:45, and we can, we can commence the public hearing. Now, let me, give me your agenda again. Now, this is a, a public hearing on a definitive subdivision plan, which has been filed by Marvin Gordon, and it has to do with premises off Lodge Street and off Gun Hill Street. What Mr. Gordon proposes to do is to divide a parcel of his land into two lots. One of approximately two acres, and the other 1.665 acres, and the other of 4.233 acres. And in order to divide a lot, Mr. Gordon is obliged to proceed under the subdivision control law because one of the lots that he is proposing doesn't have adequate frontage on the street. And in order to, in order to develop a lot in a, it's a residence B zone, Bill?
Yes.
In a residence B zone, you need 100 feet of frontage. And in order to create 100 feet of frontage, Mr. Gordon proposes to construct a small private street to be known as Schulman Way. And that new street would provide the necessary frontage for what is known as parcel or lot 29T, which would be the lot of 1.685 acres. The remaining lot would have frontage off of Gun Hill Street. So, both lots would have frontage if we approved the street. And that is really the reason for this hearing is the subdivision control law, the state law, which provides for division of lots, has various requirements for new streets. And they, it authorizes the planning board in its rules and regulations to make a variety of rules with respect to the creation of these streets. And as everyone knows, Mr. Gordon is proposing to transfer the second lot to Temple Beth Shalom for use as a place of worship. However, the planning board is not, does not authorize the use of the lot. It authorized the creation of the lot. The use of the lot is determined by zoning and by state law. And the planning board at this hearing is not, the use as a place of worship is not something that we will be approving or disapproving. It's simply not a matter that's before us under the subdivision control law. We will receive comments and understand that the use is what's principally on, or what appears to be principally on people's minds. And if we try to stay focused on the issue before us, but all I really want is be reasonably quick and try to be, make this hearing a credit to the town. So, with that, I have a sign-up sheet here, and a number of people have signed up to speak, and we'll have another, there's another one out in the hallway if other people want to sign up, and we'll get that in due course. There's no huge rush. We're not going to get it right away. I think what we would like to do is hear from Mr. Gordon and his attorney, Ms. McCetrick, and his engineer, Mr. Hanigan, to describe the proposal.
I'll just start off by saying that I'm a co-applicant, I am a co-applicant for this with the temple because if contingent on the planning board approving the subdivision as soon as possible afterwards, the gift of the land will, will be, will be accomplished, and the temple will be the owner of the property that's principally abutting the private way that we, we're proposing off of Lodge Street. And I don't know, Marion, do you want to go from here? And I'm not sure where I'm supposed to be on the agenda, so you can tell me when to, when I can give my extremely brief...
All right, just make sure you move the microphone from person to person.
Okay. Thank you very much. My name's Marion McCetrick, and I am the attorney for both Marvin Gordon and Congregation Beth Shalom of the Blue Hills. So, they are co-applicants, but Marvin Gordon is the record owner of the property, and the record owner has to apply for the subdivision approval. I'm here tonight with a number of people from the temple and also some consultants that we've been discussing various issues of this application with, and they include, as the chairman already mentioned, our engineer, Robert Hanigan. We have an environmental design consultant from Stan Tech Engineering. His name is Steve Tierney. We have a traffic consultant, Jack Gillan. They've all submitted materials that were in the narrative in the application submitted to the planning board, and they may speak briefly on certain issues tonight, or they'll certainly be here to answer questions. From Congregation Beth Shalom itself, we have Rabbi Alfred Benjamin, Marvin Gordon, of course, Lila Rosenbaum, past president, Karen Friedman-Hanna, who is a co-president, Ada Rosmarin, who's chair of the Building Committee, David Erman, chair of the Architecture and Design Committee. I mention all those names because rather than presenting the description of our application by myself, I intend, with the planning board's permission, to ask these individuals to present small sections of our presentation. Is that acceptable?
It's acceptable. You just do the presentation however you, you feel is best to do so.
All right, thank you. So, sorry about that. The chairman of the planning board has already given you a pretty good brief overview of what this application is about. It's simply an application to create a subdivision of creating two buildable lots called Lot 29T and Lot 29M, one small unbuildable parcel, Parcel A, and the dead-end road, Schulman Way. The existing parcel that's being used to create these lots is 6.1 acres, and it's located between Lodge Street and Gun Hill Street in Milton. 29T will be accessed by the new dead-end road. It will be used to build a small place of worship for the temple or Congreg, the Congregation Beth Shalom. Lot 29 is to remain undeveloped.
Excuse me. Mr. Hanigan, would you move it?
Mike, how do you want that? Okay, that's good.
All right. The map that you can see right now is, it basically shows the locus. It shows all of the lots around this site, and Mr. Hanigan will point out the...
Gun Hill Street is, is here. Pleasant Street along here, right off that, and Lodge Street, and Main Street. St. Elizabeth's Church is here, and the two lots, proposed lots are here, 29T and 29M. The existing lot is 6.18 acres, and the proposed 29M is 4.2...
Now, Mr. Hanigan, I'm sorry to interrupt you again, but hold the microphone.
You have to leave it on the table.
Okay. Well, if you can move the map a little close to the microphone, sit in the chair, and then, sorry. Okay.
So, the entire parcel is 6.18 acres. Lot 29M is 4.23 acres, and the Lot 29T is 1.66 acres. There's a small parcel. They might be able to see it better if they look at the screen rather than here. The small parcel A, which is here, which is 891 square feet, and the proposed Schulman Way is here. It's probably better described here. This is the 29M with frontage on, on Gun Hill Street. The frontage is 103 feet. Right now, it meets the, the requirement for the 80%, 70% definition of frontage. And proposed Schulman Way is, is here. It's a 50-foot right-of-way. The frontage is 100 feet, is measured according to the zoning regulations, corner to corner. It's 100 feet from corner to corner, and there's a turnaround of, with a radius of 50 feet. And it's, 29T is a proposed 1.665 acres.
Thank you. So, we're going to give you more details about each of these plans a little bit later on, but this is the subdivision. This is the subject of the application. The subdivision plan that we've created complies with all the requirements of the Milton Planning Board, except for waivers relating to street width and details of the street, which we'll describe it in more detail later. But there is an enlarged board up here in back of me that lists the waivers that we are asking for. We, we're going to give you just a quick background because we think it's quite relevant to the application and the use about the location and the history of the site. I'm going to, and then I'm going to introduce Marvin Gordon. He's going to explain to you what his reasons are for giving this land at this time. This subdivision is on land that was first acquired by Marvin Gordon's grandparents, the Schulmans, in the 1920s, and it was used for about 20 years to operate a kosher dairy farm. Marvin's father, Morris Gordon, built his home at 205 Gun Hill Street, and this is the home which is now the residence of Suzette and David Standring. The rest of the land has remained in the Gordon family. Marvin and Andrea Gordon built their family home on the property. That's at 163 Gun Hill Street. And the remaining 6.18 acres have existed for quite some time as natural open space. A lot of it is fields. There are, there are trees, and I know Marvin has allowed, at one point someone came in and did tomato cultivation on the lot and that kind of thing, but they've just used that lot as part of their land. We're, we're going to give you some information about the applicant's, the temple, and if Rabbi Benjamin would be willing to come up now and sort of give us his view on why the town needs a synagogue. Pass over this.
Members of the planning board? My name is Alfred Benjamin. I moved to Milton in 2007 after having been elected in 2006 to serve as the rabbi of what was Temple Shalom. In the grand scale of things, I am not a longtime resident of the area, having arrived hundreds of years after this neck of the woods had been settled by the Nipontit tribe of the Massachusetts Native Americans. I belong to a different tribe. My guess is that most of us here, too, are relatively new arrivals with varying tribal affiliations. It is a profound honor that I have the opportunity to be one of the first voices to speak on behalf of Congregation Beth Shalom of the Blue Hills and the Schulman Gordon family regarding our desire to subdivide land in order to build a home that will serve as the spiritual, educational, and cultural center for this area's small but vibrant Jewish community. To begin, I'd like to share a brief story from American history that highlights the importance and centrality the Jewish people have for, and how much we deeply value community. In the summer of 1733, with 42 Jewish souls on board, the ship William &amp; Sarah appeared off the coast of Savannah, Georgia. At that time, this new American colony was suffering from disease, their only physician having passed away that winter. Word came to the colony's governor, James Oglethorpe, that one of the ship's passengers was Dr. Samuel Nunez. Not having received formal prior approval to land in the New World, Oglethorpe said that Dr. Nunez could come ashore and would be welcomed to... that Dr. Nunez could come ashore and would be welcomed to live in town. Not so, though, his fellow travelers. Dr. Nunez refused this offer. Realizing that as governor, Oglethorpe was responsible for the well-being of his constituents, he sent a lawyer to Charleston to take a close look at Georgia's charter. As it turns out, Georgia's laws only excluded "rum," slaves, and Catholics from entry into the colony. So, Oglethorpe made an executive decision and let all 42 Jews in. After Dr. Nunez's arrival, the outbreak quickly subsided. Dr. Nunez was on that ship to be a blessing to his fellow tribesmen. Jewish law, after all, forbids a Jewish person from living in a town that does not have a physician. But he also wanted to be a blessing to the wider community and the future of his own family. You see, it is not possible to retain one's life as a Jew without being part of a wider community. And while the home is an essential component of Jewish life, from the mezuzah that is put on the doorpost to Shabbat and holiday candles that are lit at sundown, the focal point of Jewish communal life for people at all ages and stages is the synagogue, which serves the community in its three-part role as a house of prayer, a house of study, and a house of assembly. There are many reasons people have for stopping by their temple, in addition to bringing children to religious school, starting in kindergarten. For us here, those classes take place on Tuesday afternoons and Sunday mornings. The synagogue is a place for congregational meetings, adult education, communal celebrations like barb at mitzvah luncheons, making meals for the needy, and much more. True, we are a small congregation. After all, Milton's a small town, but that makes our gatherings and the appreciation we feel for each person even more precious. I became the rabbi of Temple Shalom because the intimacy and genuineness of this community touched my heart. I moved to Milton to be close, to have quick, easy access to the members, so I could become part of the fabric of people's lives. I also liked the feeling, the personality of the wider community, which grew even more after I got involved with the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association. Don't underestimate it. The schlep factor matters. When something is central in your life, you want it to be, you need it to be, close by. That was true for me, but I assure you, it is the same for many others. The fact is that many members of this congregation would not have moved to Milton had there not been a synagogue in town. So when you think about it, among other things, saying yes to this proposal both affirms and strengthens Milton's identity as a residential community. In the Hebrew Bible, there are 70 different words that refer to God. One of the most symbolic is shechina, which reflects the comfort and security of God's hovering presence. It is no accident that the word shechina shares the exact same root letters as the word shechuna, which means neighborhood, and shachain, which means neighbor. The message here is that the comfort of God's presence can only be felt when one embraces the idea that it also envelops, it also lodges amidst one's neighbors and neighborhood. Neighbors have a special bond. History has shown that our community takes this ideal very seriously. The English translation of Milton's motto, the one found on the town seal, is, "God has given us this tranquility." Note that it doesn't say "given me" in the singular. It says "given us" in the plural. My take on it is that this motto is not so much a promise as it is a challenge. It is a hope that we have the courage and wisdom to offer the blessings of tranquility to one another. That hope is now in your hands. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. We'd next like to ask Lila Rosenbaum and Karen Friedman Hanna to come up together to tell you what the history of the temple is and has been in Milton, just to give you some background about the temple. And I'm going to sit together. Whoever's speaking makes this...
You can sit right there.
Good evening, and thank you for listening to me in advance. I would like to share with you some highlights of the early history of Temple Shalom and why it's so important for us to build our new synagogue in Milton. It was a perfect American dream. In the late '40s and early '50s, many of us whose spouses were WWII veterans searched for a community to bring up our young families. We wanted to move to the suburbs to live in less congested areas with better educational and recreational facilities. Milton was our town of choice. Our parents and other relatives lived close by. The city was a short distance away, and the setting was bucolic. Most important to us as Jews was the fact that a group of pioneers had established the Milton Hebrew Center, later named Temple Shalom. That was in the early '40s. They raised funds and built a small, one-story building, and they painted and finished the insides themselves. It was by no means a magnificent edifice, as it consisted of only one small hall. The dedication of this first temple in Milton was a very important event and was attended by local and state government officials. In the early '50s, this temple membership grew. A small addition was added to the original building. The last stage of the temple's expansion, sanctuary, social hall, kitchen, and offices, was completed in 1960. The dedication book notes, quote, "That in a short span it had grown from a handful of determined pioneers to a vibrant, active community." Jacob Hachman, a graduate of the Jewish Theological Seminary, a WWII veteran and former Army chaplain, became our first rabbi in 1954. He served our congregation with distinction in his formative years, and we mourned his untimely death in 1966. Jerome Weistrob, also a Jewish Theological Seminary graduate, came to Temple Shalom in 1967 and was our rabbi until he retired in 1995. For 28 years, Rabbi Weistrob was our teacher, our mentor, and our spiritual leader. He also served as president of the Interfaith Clergy Association. It was a blessing for our congregation that Rabbi Weistrob and his beloved wife Francine remained in Milton after his retirement and worshiped at our synagogue. Francine still lives in Milton at Fuller Village and is an active member of our Board of Directors. Here tonight are many of our members who came to Milton in the '50s. And if you just stand for a minute, I'd like to introduce you to the planning board. Don't be bashful.
We came in '57.
Come on, there's more of you. Come on, Betsy, the '50s, the early... Yes. They're all active members who are working very hard to continue our legacy and guarantee our future. During the last 60-plus years, our members became enmeshed in the fabric of our town. We had town meeting members, volunteers at Milton Hospital and at the library. We support the food pantry. We coached Little League, joined PTA, and we were scouting Brownie leaders. Our temple is a second home for us. It has become synonymous with friendship, caring, learning, belonging, personal growth, and commitment. It is our center, as the rabbi said, for prayer, study, and fellowship. We found our dream in Milton. Please, please approve our plan for a new home so that we may continue to make our dream a reality. A permanent home in Milton for Congregation Beth Shalom of the Blue Hills, as we're now known, will not only enrich our lives, but will enrich the lives of the entire Milton community. Thank you again for this.
Hi, I'm Karen Friedman Hanna, and I'm the co-president with Renate Boit for Congregation Beth Shalom of the Blue Hills. And I'd like to share with you how we've gotten to this point now. In the early 2000s, before Rabbi Benjamin arrived, we found ourselves saddled with a building that was really too large for our congregation and in need of significant repairs. For several years, we cut back to survive. We had only a part-time rabbi. We discharged our cantor, and we deferred maintenance on our building. During that period, unfortunately, we lost several families, young families, and experienced no growth in our membership. In 2005, we began a three-year strategic planning process. In doing so, we set new goals, including hiring a full-time rabbi, and we became committed to remaining in Milton. That became our goal. When we defined what we wanted, we turned a corner, and our congregation actually started experiencing new growth again and excitement in our potential and our future. Several young families began to join and enroll their children in the Hebrew school. As many of you know, we made an effort to rezone our Blue Hill Avenue property, which was approved by the planning board and received a majority vote at town meeting, but it wasn't enough since we needed a 2/3 majority. As a result, we sold that property to the Concord Baptist Church, which has become a welcome new member of Milton's faith community. Our new home committee, which was chaired by Robert Wazowski, formed in 2010. Its purpose primarily was to arrange for the sale of that building and move out of the building, search for a new location in Milton, oversee the merger with Temple Beth El of Quincy, which occurred in 2013, and arrange for the sale of their building that actually has just gone under agreement. Throughout these ups and downs, there's remained a vibrant core of Jewish community that had a strong commitment of staying together here in Milton. We think of ourselves as small but mighty. Together with an extremely supporting surrounding Milton community, we've managed to stay together as the quote-unquote "wandering Jews of Milton." So many organizations in town have extended their hospitality to us, including renting space to us, including the First Congregational Church, the Milton Public Schools, Milton Hospital, Fuller Village, Pine Tree Brook, this senior center, Milton Public Library, the Unitarian Church, that's just to name some of them, as well as many townspeople expressing their support all along the way since we've moved out of our building at Blue Hill Avenue and most recently now. We submitted a petition to you to show you the people that were signing on publicly to support us in the last few weeks, and I do have an amended version of it. Since we emailed it to you and handed it to some of you, the numbers have increased to over 1,000 just in the last few days, and the numbers keep pouring in, and we have that to give you after as well. We have a copy for each of you with the amended signatures. Needless to say, we feel very loved and very blessed. I'd like to, it really was amazing to us when we read through the petition's comments how far spread this really has gone, how it goes beyond the borders of our own town. Some of the names are from all over the world, actually, and people expressing their connection to Milton and why it's important to them even to have a synagogue here. It's not just within our town that this matters. It's to anybody who's been affiliated with our town or who has family members in our town, and they understand the need to be able to pray in their own community. With the generous gift of the land that we were given, we're pleased to form a building committee in late November of 2013, which is chaired by Ada Rose Maron. We have over 40 members of our congregation now working diligently, many, many meetings, on various subcommittees for the project, including architecture and design, legal and finance, outreach, capital campaign, and construction. This is an incredibly, incredibly exciting time for our congregation. We're filled with hope for the future, and with the planning board's approval, we look forward to settling in in our new spiritual home on Schulman Way in Milton. I speak for both Renate and myself, as well as our entire congregation on this. We promise you that we will be very good neighbors and a continued very, very active part of our community. Thank you so much.
Ada Rose Maron's going to address us now, just to give you some idea of the scope of the search for the new home for Congregation Beth Shalom, which, of course, has brought us here today.
Good evening. As Karen mentioned, the synagogue and the new home committee had a strong commitment to staying here in Milton, but the fact is, we didn't quite realize how hard that was going to be. I brought with me this evening a map... Whoops. To show you the locations of the over 50 properties that the new home committee explored for potential purchase or rental for any part of our programming, which included an 18-month effort to pursue a partnership with First Parish Church for a shared campus, which came close, but not all the way to fruition. As you see on this map, those properties were extended all around the town of Milton. Some have said that they wish we could be on a main road in town, and we looked for three years at many places on main roads. But as you know, there's precious little undeveloped land in Milton. Renovations of homes, existing homes for institutional use, was cost prohibitive, and despite numerous competitive bids on properties in various locations... numerous competitive bids on properties in various locations, none of our efforts prevailed in finding a permanent new home. So needless to say, you can imagine our delight when we were approached by Marvin and Andrea Gordon with the suggestion that they might donate some of their land for our new spiritual home. We see this as a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Thank you, Ada. And I'd like to ask Marvin Gordon now to tell us why he has decided to make this gift.
So far, we haven't been able to bring it to the -- but we'll get there to the subject that you've said is the jurisdiction of the Planning Board, but this is very useful to show the overwhelming support that we have from not only the Jewish community, but the community at large. But I would say why I am donating this piece of property, I have to go through, and I hope I will do it very quickly, going to abbreviate it even more, given the length of the presentations so far. But I'll go very quickly through the family history in Milton. It goes back to 1920, when Sam was birthed as Schulman, hence the name Schulman Way for this road. Grandparents on my mother's side moved to Milton with eight children, seven of whom, including my mother, attended the Milton Public Schools. They were the first Jewish family to own land in the town of Milton, and to the best of my knowledge. My great uncle, who was a real estate developer in Boston, purchased the land for them, part of the original Voss, extended Voss farm, a family farm. He purchased it through, interestingly enough, Ropes and Gray, his attorneys, who were distraught to buy it. The -- for 29 years, he owned the, originally, over 12 acres, then it was diminishing to 10-plus acres as he sold lots, including all the lots, a lot of the lots on Pleasant Street that now have developed when the dairy farming business wasn't that hot, and sold them one lot at a time. And then he -- but on the remaining property, he farmed various crops and produced and distributed kosher milk, eggs, and chickens. In 1932, my parents built their house on the property, the first house on Gun Hill Street, parenthetically, which my father was given by my grandfather. I grew up in that house, now owned, much enlarged, by Zusa and David Standring. When my parents traveled in the winter, I was very familiar with the Lodge Street area since I spent a couple of weeks a year on Lodge Street as the guests of the Snell family. Mr. Snell was the geometry teacher for decades at Milton High School, and his elder son was one of my best friends. The Milton school system, from a personal point of view, prepared me well for higher education and community involvement, for which I am profoundly grateful. In 1965, my wife Andrea and I built our home on the property, which my mother gave, cut off the lot, which was the prior subdivision of the property at that time, and raised our family there, who all attended the Milton Public Schools. Three out of my four daughters graduated Milton High School. It was clear to me, after three years of fruitless searching, that the temple needed something to be done to help. So I am donating this land in my grandfather's memory, thus the name of the road, because that is what he would have wanted me to do, given his background. Equally important to me is that this will enable the temple to remain in Milton, which I feel is very important for the diversity of the town and the quality of life that the town of Milton is known for. So that is equally important to me, that it's an extremely big benefit to the town as a whole, not just to the members of Temple Shalom. So this is a recognition by -- and this gift is a recognition by me of my grandfather's commitment to the Milton community, and it enhances the overall diversity and quality of life in the town of Milton for all its constituents. Thank you.
I think the history is very significant to why this parcel is being given, but it's also important to understand the conditions under which Marvin Gordon has agreed to give the land, because a number of those conditions do relate to the way the property will be used, how large a building can be built on the property, and other characteristics of the temple's use. So I'm going to ask Ada Rose Maron to summarize for us what those conditions are, and I want you to keep them in mind as we complete the rest of our presentation about this application, because those conditions provide a framework for what can happen on this property, and they have been designed to protect the neighborhood. So they're quite important, I think, to understanding why this is a good site for the temple. Thank you. After a couple of months of discussions between the temple and the Gordons, an agreement for the charitable conveyance of the land was signed on January 2, 2014. And in that agreement, there are a number of provisions, as Marion said, really form the underpinnings for the proposal that you have before you tonight, and they reflect the Gordon's deep commitment to being sure that this proposal and our new home on this land will have a low impact on the neighboring community, neighborhood. Among those provisions are things that you'll probably hear a few times tonight, that they include a footprint that will be no larger than 6,000 square feet, a height of the building that will not exceed two stories, lighting that will minimize transmission of light beyond the property's boundaries, parking that will fulfill Milton zoning requirements, an easement for construction vehicles to enter via the Gordon's driveway so as not to bother the Lodge Street neighbors with construction traffic. And two items that seem to really resonate with the temple community is no bingo and no preschool. A lot of us breathe a sigh of relief about the bingo, because we weren't too crazy about that anyway, but it was an important fundraiser for the temple. But the preschool was something that we loved to have in our old building. We had a wonderful relationship with the Campbell School at Blue Hill Avenue, but it does bring extra traffic to the site. And again, this was to minimize the impact on the neighborhood, so we did agree to no long-term leases to third parties, and that is in the agreement, and so there will be no preschool as part of our building. Another important factor, in addition to the provisions of the agreement, that will affect how this property is used, is how the temple operates, and I'm going to just tell you a little bit about that. Our synagogue's membership is, right now, about 130 member units. That includes singles, couples, and families, and that also includes members from our recent merger with Temple Beth El of Quincy. So some of our typical activities, weekly, we have Saturday morning Sabbath services that typically have about 25 people in attendance, many of whom either drive together or walk to services, and those services take place from about 9:30 in the morning till about 12:30 in the afternoon. We have a religious school with current enrollment of 21 students. Many of those children travel together with siblings and in car pools. Tuesday afternoons from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., we have 11 students of our older students come for religious school, and on Sundays from 10:15 in the morning till 12:15 in the afternoon, all 21 students attend religious school. We have about two to three bar and bat mitzvah celebrations a year. This is for our students and children from temple families who reach 13 years of age. It's a joyous time. We have about two to three of those a year, and the typical attendance at those bar and bat mitzvahs, which take place on Saturday morning, is about 120 people. Weddings and funerals are typically held in other locations. For example, weddings are often held at hotels or catering establishments, and funerals are typically held at Jewish funeral homes or at the cemetery itself. Our biggest days of the year at our synagogue are what are called the High Holidays, which are Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur. Those take place during three days each year in the fall, and approximately 160 people attend, which leads us to the capacity of our building is 160 people. Tickets must be arranged for in advance by people who want to attend the High Holiday Services, which gives us an accurate count of those planning to come and join us for worship. If needed, on those days, we can make arrangements for overflow parking with other nearby institutions as a precaution, and we've already begun those conversations. St. Elizabeth's Church is around the corner. Cunningham Colicott Schools are just down the street on Edgehill Road, and Milton Academy is right up the street on Randolph Avenue. So there are lots of possibilities, depending upon when the holidays fall, and we are confident that we'd be able to make those arrangements. The services on the High Holidays are longer than our regular Shabbat services. Those go from about 9:30 in the morning till 1:30 in the afternoon. And two further items of note related to traditional practice with the Jewish community. One is that many congregants like to walk to services, which is a nice way to enjoy the day, enjoy the exercise, see others walking to synagogue, and it also reduces the number of cars coming to and from the temple. And second is that Jewish religious services typically last a long time, as I told you, either 9:30 to 12:30, or, you know, 9:30 till 1:30 or 2:00 on the High Holidays. And what happens is that members arrive and leave on a staggered basis throughout that interval. In other words, everyone doesn't arrive and leave at the very same time. In fact, there are varying levels of stamina even within families of how long one partner might be able to hang in there, and the other one might catch a ride home with somebody else. And if you ask people in this room, they'll probably know what I'm talking about. Fortunately, we have a wonderful rabbi who is happy to see us whenever we arrive. Thank you, Ada. I'm just going to sum up to say that because of these factors of the condition -- this isn't a sum-up of our presentation, sorry, we have more to go, but in terms of the suitability of the site, the conditions and limitations on the use, the nature of the operation of the temple, and what this site is like, this is really a very good location for this use. It's close to a main road, yet it's a private, quiet location. There's adequate space to build a building on one end of the lot away from Lodge Street neighbors, still provide parking, and still provide landscaped buffers on the Lodge Street edge and along the driveway. The sanctuary will be designed to look out at an open field, and the other end of the temple, which will be the entrance, is going to be adjacent to a conservation area, which will remain untouched. The street entrance is at an intersection, so there is no front yard of a property that will look directly onto the new street and be disturbed directly by that traffic. The gift agreement, as you've already explained, it limits the appearance, the size, and the use of the building so as to protect the neighborhood, and it's a small congregation which will generate a very limited flow of traffic on a weekly basis. So because of all these factors, this actually turns out to be a very good site. It's a fortunate, a very fortunate event for Congregation Beth Shalom that Marvin Gordon has decided to offer this land and give them this opportunity. But I think it's a beautiful site, and I hope that by the time we finish explaining how this will work, that you'll agree that it really is one of the best sites that could have been selected in our town. I'm just going to go into some of the things that we have to show in order to comply with the subdivision control requirements, and I'm going to start out without getting into much description or detail and just show you that there are a number of zoning bylaws that, in the end, the building will have to comply with. And so we have a board, we're going to -- if you could put that up. Thank you, Ada. I hope it's large enough so that you can see the chart, the charts designed to make it unnecessary for me to go into a lot of detail about zoning, but to just explain generally what Alex Whiteside has already explained to you. This is a building used for a religious purpose is an allowed use under Milton zoning. It's also allowed under Massachusetts general laws, but the town is allowed to regulate dimensional requirements for such a building, and that's why there's still zoning that applies to this use, and this building, when it is built, is going to have to apply to a lot of dimensional requirements. They're all designed to protect neighbors by providing a certain amount of distance between any building and any parking lot and the neighbor's lot line. And because this building will be over 5,000 square feet, it will be 6,000 square feet, the lot line distances are bigger than they would be normally for a B-zone. So the front lot line clearance has to be 35 feet. The building has to be 35 feet from the front line of the street. Side yards, 25. Rear yards, 40 feet. These requirements for this building, because it's an institutional building and not a single-family residence, give greater protection to the neighbors than there would be otherwise. There are also, we also have building coverage and floor space and open space requirements in our bylaw, and the final design for this building will have to comply with those requirements. We did have to look at how a building would fit on the site in order to know that this lot would work. So although we don't have a final building design, we spent a great deal of time figuring out how the building could be located so as to be as far as possible from neighbors' lots and to still comply with zoning. And this building at this 6,000-square-foot footprint will fit on this lot, and we will be able to meet all the zoning requirements. The primary subject of this application, though, is subdivision control and the subdivision and the rules and regulations of the Planning Board. And we have striven to produce an application that complies with the rules and regulations of the Planning Board, and in the end, we have presented such an application, and we will describe it to you in detail, but there are five, just five waivers, all relating to the design of the driveway, that we are requesting. So other than these five waivers, our application does comply with the rules and regulations. If the Planning Board members want to see a copy of the waivers that we're going to talk about, we'll just pass them around. Fundamentally, the difference between this roadway and a roadway into a subdivision with multiple homes is it's more like a driveway than a roadway. And even in a number of subdivisions that have been built in Milton, the roadway has not been 32 feet wide, which is the requirement in the rules and regulations. So we are asking the Planning Board to waive the 32-foot roadway pavement width and to allow us to create a roadway with 18 feet of pavement. And in our, what Mr. Hanigan is pointing out to you now, is the detailed plan, it's called the utilities and profile plan, that shows exactly how the roadway is designed and what it looks like on the entrance, in the entrance to and what it looks like on the entrance, in the entrance to this lot. We've also asked for a waiver allowing us to create only one sidewalk rather than a sidewalk on either side of the road, because we think that's more than sufficient to allow for pedestrian traffic to get in and out of the temple. We've asked for a waiver of the requirement that there be granite curbing along the roadway. This is not primarily because it saves money, although it probably will, but because when you put granite curbing in, it looks more urban, you know? It looks more developed. And the aim here is to create a driveway, a roadway entrance that looks more like a driveway and less like a city street. And for that reason, we think that the use of granite curbing should not happen. So we're asking for a waiver of that requirement. And finally, because we are asking for an 18-foot pavement width, we are asking for a smaller tree lawn, because the normal pavement width of 4.6 feet, which is in the regulations, is designed to fit with the 32-foot pavement width. And we don't think we need that wide a tree lawn or that it would even look that good. In addition, there's another benefit, which is that if you have less tree lawn, you have more buffer area on the other side of the sidewalk. So it creates a larger buffer on the side of the neighbor on each side of the driveway. And finally, the last waiver is kind of a technical waiver. The intersection angle is supposed to be 90 degrees. In our design, it's 94 degrees and 6 minutes. So we're asking a waiver of the 90-degree intersection angle to allow a 94-degree, 6-minute intersection angle. That probably isn't something that any of us could really see if we looked at the driveway, but it happens that we're not quite in compliance there. So in every other respect, and there are many, there are many technical requirements for a subdivision, and Ada's going to put up a list. It's not totally comprehensive, but it kind of gives you an idea of what all the different requirements are. And they address sewage disposal. In our case, we're connecting to the public sewer. Stormwater and surface drainage. There's a section in our application that describes how stormwater management will be done. There are also details in the driveway plan that we had up, and we can put up again if you want, things like, you know, connections with sewers, connections for the water lines, placement of utility lines. All of those details are on that utility plan and profile plan that's in color that shows the shape of the driveway. And there's a requirement that the Board of Health review the plan. They have, I believe, and maybe Bill Clark can affirm this, and the Conservation Commission as well, have both looked at our plans and have not asked for any further review. There are other requirements that we don't think really apply to this application, but in some cases, there are open spaces or parks proposed for subdivision proposals. In this case, the location is for a place of worship. The second lot, 29M, isn't even going to be developed. So to the greatest extent possible, open space is going to remain on this site anyway. There are no really significant natural features on this site, other than the fact that it's undeveloped lot, which is always nice to have next to your lot. But we didn't identify any particular natural features that needed protection. We'll be following the conventional standards of construction, monuments and curbing. And the fire alarm system, which is described in the subdivision or rules and regulations of the planning board, applies to a road that's longer than 1,000 feet. So we don't believe we're required to put in any alarm box. But we will, of course, be putting in a fire hydrant. And the location for the fire hydrant has been identified for us by the police chief, and it is on that same detailed plan, the Utilities and Profile Plan. Fire chief, sorry. And he's, he has, in addition, the fire chief did sit down with us and look at our, he looked at our plans, I met with him, and discussed his view on whether the design of the roadway was safe and would be adequate for fire safety vehicles to get in to the site. And he felt that it was. He wrote a letter to that effect, which is in our application in one of the addenda sections. Street lighting, we're going to address a little bit later. We've had quite a bit of discussion about street lighting, again, because this is really like a driveway entrance, and we want lighting that will look and fit in, look as good as possible, fit in as well as possible with the residential area. We've made some modifications after speaking with neighbors, and we're going to give you some detailed information about that. And then finally, there's a requirement that signs be addressed or at least discussed in some way. So all we've said in our application is we'll comply with the signed bylaw. We'll have a street sign that will be a conventional street sign. And there'll be a sign for the temple that will be designed in the future after review with neighbors and also with the sign review committee. But it will be of a size that fits with our signed bylaw. The subdivision control or the rules and regulations of the planning board require that we describe any easements or covenants or restrictions that apply to this site. So I'm just briefly going to address what those are. They're also described in the application that the planning board received. As you've already heard, there's going to be a temporary access easement for construction vehicles. They're going to come in the driveway on the Gordon property. They're going to enter through an opening in the stone wall, and they're going to go directly onto the lot that way. That will avoid having a lot of construction traffic and disruption on Lodge Street. Marvin Gordon has asked for an easement to benefit Marvin and Andrea Gordon for as long as he owns a budding land, which would allow him to drive his vehicles from his remaining land onto the land to be given to Congregation Beth Shalom. It doesn't, there's not going to be any roadway or anything like that, but it means he could take his tractor or his truck, and he could drive it onto the roadway if he wanted to do that. There will be a covenant, and we haven't written it yet because we don't know what the requirements of the Department of Public Works are going to be for the water lines and the sewer line. But we will be preparing a covenant which will describe the obligations of Congregation Beth Shalom to maintain the new road, which is a private way. They will have to do their own snow clearance and maintenance. They will have to maintain the street lights. And they may have to maintain the water pipes and sewer pipes. Or the town may decide that they want, even though they're private, that they want to be able to have some control. And one reason the town sometimes does that, especially for the water pipes on a private way, is that they are responsible for whether the water is clean that runs through the pipes. And so they may say that they want control. When we find out what they want to do, we'll be preparing a draft covenant, but it's subject to approval by the planning board and probably by town council, too. So we won't be able to complete that until the planning board has approved it. In addition, there's going to be a right of first refusal to Marvin Gordon for his lifetime to purchase this property if Congregation Beth Shalom decides to sell it. So as long as he's alive, he would have a right of first refusal, which he could exercise at his option, should the temple decide that it no longer wished to remain on this property and it wanted to sell it. He would buy the property back if he wanted to. Lastly, we've had some discussions in the last two weeks with neighbors about a condition limiting the use of the road. And we have agreed to a condition that would expressly prohibit any extension of this road onto Lot M or onto any right-of-way, any private way, any public way that was created in the future onto Gun Hill Street. So without reading the whole text of the condition, the point of the condition is that we have agreed that there will never be a through connection from Schulman Way back to Gun Hill Street across Lot 29M. That is a considerable benefit to the neighborhood, because it means there can never be a cross connection and increased cut-through traffic, which is always an issue on every street in Milton. And it's something that, you know, simply wouldn't have been a condition if this development proposal hadn't occurred. So we are proposing to the planning board that the applicants are willing to accept that condition. And we are asking the planning board if they would be willing to impose it on any approval that they decide to confer on this application. I'm wondering whether there's more we need to say about the plans, Bob, do you think? Or maybe just to go through the plans with you so you know, there are four plans that have been submitted. There's also a cover and locust map, which we already described to you, that simply shows the properties in the area, the lots that surround the subdivision application site. The definitive plan shows the lots, and it shows that the new road that's going to be created with the turnaround. It shows, you know, that we're going to create a 1.65 acre lot and a 4.233 acre lot, one unbuiltable parcel of only 891 square feet, and then the new roadway into Schulman Way. The other thing that you want to note on the definitive plan is that it shows, you can see the orange dashed area around each lot. That's the area defining where you can build or where you can put a parking lot or a driveway, I mean, excuse me, a parking lot or a building on these lots. So outside that orange dotted area to the lot line is an area that you cannot build in. So that's sort of, in the subdivision plan, that's something that you know from the beginning, there will be no building within that dotted line. I mean, outside the dotted line. Thank you.
Can I say a couple things at this point?
Yes, if you'd like to, Marvin.
I just want to emphasize, I just want to emphasize that a majority of the waivers we're asking for, the things that I specifically wanted to do because I thought it would make, have the total project would have less impact on the neighborhood, on the neighborhood. By making the narrower street, which is sufficient for, as the fire chief has said, it's sufficient for public safety and it's sufficient for the needs of the temple, but it also allows for a wider green buffer and maximizing the green space and minimizing the paved space is a major objective of what I wanted to accomplish. And also, and Mr. Hanigan's done a very good job as far as it was possible, I wanted to preserve that this lot, if you've never seen it, is heavily wooded and with trees that have to be a couple of hundred years old, judging by their girth and their height. And we wanted to preserve as many of those as possible so that overall, this maintains the appearance of a wooded lot and the maximum green space and that could, from an ecology point of view, the least impact on the environment. So there are certain of the deed restrictions and so forth that they had to accomplish this and with, and consistent with building the temple that was adequate to their needs. And also, another major thing that's in those restrictions, which I don't know whether we emphasized enough, is this is basically no commercial activity. This is for a religious use and cannot be sublet for anything that smacks of being a commercial activity in any way. So that in a residential neighborhood, very quiet residential neighborhood in the town of Milton, I think, was an essential part. So, and in the tradition of this being the Schulman farm from 1929, we wanted to remain as close to being open space and farmland as humanly possible and still fulfill this need. So that was, that's written into a lot of the restrictions and we, it makes it, may make it a little harder on fundraising for the temple. On the other hand, they're not paying, they're getting this land, which is of considerable value for, to augment their equity going into this. And so I feel, I feel good about what I'm doing for the town in maintaining open space and green space at the same time without impairing the temple's abilities to go forward. So that's a lot of the underlying motivation on the way. And we put in that, I started off at 5,000 feet, but given that it was way too small for what they wanted, the compromise was have a 6,000-foot imprint on that amount of, on basically a almost two acre, if you include the existing conservation areas and so forth, it's an almost existing two-acre plot, and 6,000-foot imprint is really minimal. And everybody on the planning board, I'm sure, is aware that there are houses being built in Milton as we speak that are considerably larger on their footprint in terms of square footage than this is. So, you know, from that point of view, and the street, the narrowing of the street, especially for the two neighbors that are on either side on the Lodge Street thing facing Maitland, is a big plus in terms of their ability to have the buffer, which we intend to have. I intend to insist that we have a vegetative, vegetative buffer of trees and bushes and so forth that will protect those two neighbors on either side of that entryway, more so than certainly is required by any of the bylaws. But that being, being wanting to protect the Lodge Street neighborhood is always uppermost in my mind while at the same time doing what I thought was going to be a big benefit to the town, the Milton community as a whole and the temple. And it's, those are equally important and Andrea and my perspective is to vote that it has to be for the town and the temple. And this was an opportunity to accomplish both things.
That kind of gives you the flavor of, since about October, this, the gift and how it might occur and what the conditions might be were the subject of a lot of discussion. Marvin Gordon and his wife and Andrea have put a tremendous amount of effort and thought into how to do this in such a way that it would be a benefit to the temple and a positive benefit to the neighborhood in the end, in the way it would be designed and used. So just to complete our description, I'm just going to say, on the roadway design that you're looking at right now, this plan is important because it has lots of details, some of which probably only interest engineers. But if you're interested in those details, they are on the plan. What is significant about this plan is that we made some revisions in it, because, again, there were meetings held with neighbors after we filed the application, when we really started to discuss what was bothering people and what they might like to see changed. And so we adjusted the location of the pavement to where you see it on this plan today so that there was more space, more of an equal distribution of green space on each side of the roadway. And the result was green space on the outside of the sidewalk of 15 and 1/2 feet on Mr. Walsh's side, and somewhat less, somewhat less green space on the Santos Wasso's side. Both neighbors have agreed to that plan and support it. And that, however, required that we redo the plan, which was some work for the, our engineer, but he's done it and completed it. And the drawing he's showing you tonight is the plan that we have agreed on. that we have agreed on with neighbors, as far as where pavement's going to be in the roadway. There is, you know, we're going to talk about street lighting a bit later on, but the streetlights are shown on this plan. They are required in the rules and regulations, but the specifications are something that we are going to present a proposal for, and we hope the planning board will agree with the specifications we have. Final plan is called the section and detailed plan, detail plan, and I don't know much at all about this. It shows hydrant assembly detail, water main trench detail, something called thrust block detail, and in my notes here I have, what is this? But you don't really have to explain it, Bob. It's just that, and service connection detail. But if you have an interest in those areas, you can look at the plans, you can come up and look at the big plan, or if you have questions, please ask them when the time comes for questions. So we feel, in terms of the storm, the planning board's rules and regulations, as well as the general requirements for a subdivision application, that, you know, we have met the requirements, except for the waivers that we've requested. And the one section that we haven't discussed, and we want to address because we know there's been a lot of discussion about this use, is what's called the statement of development effect. Part of what you have to show under this part of the regulatory requirements is what the physical effect will be on the site compared to what it's like now. But a big part of that in our application relates to what the effect of this will be on the neighborhood and on the town. So in terms of physical effect, I would just simply summarize what I have here to say. There isn't a significant physical effect in the sense that it's a relatively level site. There will be drainage, adequate drainage provided, so you're not allowed to increase runoff from a site when you do a development. There are no unusual features to this site. There are no trails crossing it right now. There is wildlife on the site, and everybody can tell you they're a deer. And the main reason that's an issue for us is that when we design vegetation for our plan, we're going to have to try to find vegetation that's deer resistant, or it's just going to be eaten and it will disappear quickly. So we think the deer will probably still come around, because they come around to lots of residential neighborhoods now. And in other wildlife, deer, there's some wild turkeys and birds, things that you see around Milton and on a lot of lots. I think, though, what we want to do at this point is to discuss with you our analysis of the development effect on the town and the neighborhood. And I'm going to summarize some comments here, but I do want to indicate, I believe our traffic engineer is here, Jack Gillan, and if, he will be here, I'm summarizing what he put in his report, and if I make a mistake, I hope he'll correct me. He will be here to answer questions later on, if you do have questions about our traffic analysis. But basically, the traffic flow at peak periods and the adequacy of the proposed circulation pattern at the intersection of Lodge Street with this new roadway is described from the letter that we received from Mr. Gillan. He has concluded that Lodge Street has a more than sufficient stopping distance at each end, at the ends of the roadway, and it's a safe roadway to enter either from Randolph Ave or Pleasant Street. He reviewed our proposal, and he does not, his conclusion is that it doesn't present any unique traffic impact, and that the access point for the driveway, for the roadway, is located in the safest possible location. He relied on trip generation statistics that have, that were created by the town because there is an ongoing concern in the neighborhood with cut-through traffic. And of course, it's a common concern in many Milton neighborhoods, but it is a big concern in this neighborhood. We have discussed with the Lodge Street neighbors that they will continue to be concerned with this, not so much because of our proposal, but because they'd still like to see some traffic calming measures and possible consideration of other traffic changes, one, you know, no enter during the rush hour times and things like that. What we've done in that regard is to agree with the neighbors that the temple will participate in those discussions and will support any efforts that the neighbor puts, neighbors put forward to introduce traffic calming measures and try to get the traffic commission to agree to those things. So we're going to be in it together, as far as traffic calming goes. The traffic counts that were done, were done by the Milton Police Department in response to concerns about traffic. That's what this report relies on. Anytime traffic counts are done, there are always possibilities that at other times that traffic might have been a little higher or a little lower. So these aren't, you know, set in stone, but the traffic counts give you some idea of what the traffic flow is. And using those, Mr. Gillan was able to take the flow that he estimated from this use and to say that this use would not have a significant or harmful effect on the overall traffic level in this location. And it's very important, as he notes in his report, that the reason there's low impact is partly because of the type of operation that the temple's going to have. And we've already described that for you. You know, the conditions that are in the gift, their, the limits on building capacity, the low membership, amount of membership for this temple, and also the fact that weekly worship services usually have about 25 people attending. So his summary is that the characteristics, these characteristics of operation, conditions limiting the use, and the existing traffic counts for peak usage times on the surrounding streets indicated to him that there would be no substantial impact on traffic because of this project. The second area that you're required to address is whether there will be any impact on public services, fire and public safety is what's relevant here. Certainly, we're not going to have an impact on the school system, because we're not, this isn't a residential proposal, but in a normal subdivision, you'd be talking about that. Here, what we did was we had the fire chief review the plan, and he concluded that it was a good, safe design for the roadway. Pointed out to me that the building would have to be sprinkled, which makes it safer than most residences today, and that, so in general, there would be no additional impact on fire. The police department has also reviewed the applicant's description of its operation and traffic on the surrounding streets, and has advised the applicants that this use will have a minimal effect on traffic in the neighborhood. I don't know if anyone's here from the police department who wants to address this issue. Chief Wells is here, so if the board is willing, I'd ask him to briefly and concisely indicate what his view is on this, on this traffic impact and public safety.
Good evening. This is the first, this is the first time I've ever been before the planning committee in my, in my whole life.
I'll see you often in the future.
Did you charge, do you charge admission to your meetings? That's why you get such a, oh, thank you. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Richard Wells. I'm the chief of police for the town and also the chair of the traffic commission. Mr. Gordon, even though we did not have jurisdiction on this, brought this before us shortly after he devised the plan that he was going to make this gift to the temple. So we did hear him out. He came forward to us with his plan. Just a little bit of history, anyone who lives in this town today, like, and it's probably the one common thing we all have in this room right now, is that we all live here and make our home here. And from my point of view as police chief, traffic is an issue for all of us. We live in a community that, for all its amenities, for how close we are to the city of Boston, the schools, the quality of life, the physical makeup, the one downside is we're a shortcut for everyone. And things today like GPS and MapQuest make us even more of a shortcut, because you have to go no further than hitting alternative routes, the first time 93 or 128 gridlock, and it might as well just say, go through the town of Milton, because we find it in all our straits. This is an issue, Mr. Clark, who also sits on the traffic commission, that we were already looking at, because we've recently seen the intersection of Reed'sdale Road, 28, and Randolph Ave, particularly in the PM commute, anyone who's traveled it at night, going anyway, whether you're coming from Mattapan, East Milton, south from Boston, trying to get to Randolph, it's very, very congested. We've asked Mass Highway to come in and look at this in a way to try and mitigate this. We've also discussed this a lot in the big plan with the master planning committee, their traffic engineer, Jeff, who's here now, because, as I say, our streets, Lodge Street, and as you just heard Mr. Gordon talk a little about the history of it, was designed for houses that had one and two cars at most. Today, our own houses have three, four, and five cars, and that just all adds to the congestion that we deal with. So that is the bigger issue that we're looking at. We are, we do know that the, that the Lodge Street residents have some concerns, particularly on the PM commute, and that's what the traffic, we don't see a speed issue at all on Lodge Street. We do see a volume jump that happens on the PM commute, especially people trying to cut through Lodge to beat that set of lights where it backs up. And that's where we think Mass Highway has to weigh in on this, because they set the light in the design of that intersection. With regard to the temple proposal, both regard, and you've heard everyone here articulate this to you tonight about the times and the usage, we see that very minimal. We really do. I think that the lighting, the design, all of that, in the year 2014 will be state-of-the-art. And I think that, I think all of you in the end, the residents and the members of the congregation will be very happy with the finished product when it comes. As Mrs. McGetrick stated to you, we will continue to listen to their concerns, we'll listen, I'm very happy to hear her state that they agree collectively to work on this. I think that in the long run, in the end, I think this will be really a positive thing for the town of Milton, and I think that we can really make this work. I know that I spoke, I usually very rarely speak from a personal point of view, and I only live 100 yards away, as you do, from the intersection of Lodge Street and 28. But I really do believe in my heart, and I know that this congregation's been working very hard to try and find a home in this community, their community just as much as ours. And I believe that the philanthropic efforts of Mr. Gordon and his leadership in this endeavor, because five years ago or two years ago, he probably didn't have any idea like this. I think in the end, all the things that he's done, the discussions I've had with him, the concessions he's made, his concerns for the community, the residents, his neighbors, have been really a real true model of leadership, and I think that in the end, as I said, I think this will be a very positive endeavor for the town of Milton.
A question.
You didn't say anything about questions.
The question's an easy one. Would you say that the Lodge Street has adequate capacity for this particular use?
Yes. We collectively believe that, the entire, the engineers, all of us collectively believe that this proposal and the design of Lodge Street, including Pleasant Street, would adequately meet this, meet these needs, and it could be implemented very easily.
All right, well, thank you. We used to meet in the police station, in the library.
We don't have this much room. Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is another section that says you're supposed to talk about impact on public works. I didn't really have a lot to say about that, other than the fact that this project will use a forced main connection to the sewer, and the applicant will provide private maintenance of the sewer line, if so required, depending on what we work out with DPW. The project will be connected to town water, and there is always a requirement on every development in this town, according to the town regulations, that there be four-to-one inflow and infiltration remediation. That's required by town regulations, so that's something that this project would have to be, would have to pay for or do in-kind work at the time the sewer connections are made. Probably the major issue that we want to address, and this will be kind of how we wrap up our presentation, is the issue of neighborhood impact. And I'd like to ask David Erman to come up, because David Erman has been working with an outreach group and has been meeting with neighbors since September 2013, and he's going to summarize what those efforts have been like, and what the issues have been, especially recently, and how we have come to agreement on those issues, or have not. So we're just going to give you a summary of what's happened.
Good evening. When I timed this, it was about four minutes and 58 seconds, so, so now it's five minutes. Members of the congregation, Beth Shalom and I, have met with the neighbors to listen and to discuss their concerns, and as a result, we have built agreements with which we are all comfortable. Let me add that I'm also a member of congregation Beth Shalom of the Blue Hills, as well as co-chair of the Architecture and Design Committee. We will continue to seek neighbors' input as building and landscape designs progress. Over the course of our meetings, we enhanced relationships with neighbors. As we did that, tensions reduced and our ability to work together increased. We have had eight meetings. Our approach was to hold these meetings in neutral locations in order to enhance communication. After our first gathering at the property on Lodge Street, we met in conference rooms at the library, the hospital, and in neighbor homes. Also, we have communicated through email, US mail, and over the telephone. We had one meeting with the Board of Selectmen in the fall, at which we heard from members of the public and the board. As a result of these meetings, we've addressed issues of lighting, traffic, landscape, and the placement of pavement. We are now recommending shorter light poles as a result of these meetings with neighbors. Originally, they were 14 feet, now they're 12 feet. The light intensity of the fixtures is less than initially presented. The shorter poles fit in with the feel of the neighborhood. The lighting meets the way, the lights, sorry, the lighting meets the wayfinding requirements. It will provide safety for the neighborhood and our buildings while putting no burden on any. Steve Tierney, our landscape architect from StanTech, will provide you with more details in a bit. Control of lighting, we are investigating lighting systems that will allow us maximum control of lighting. This was an issue presented by the neighbors. Will they be on all the time? Can they turn off? Can they be dimmed even further? So this is a goal that we have, to have flexible system that can be programmed. At our meeting on July 9, January 9, attendees mentioned their concern that, about lighting from cars, and they wanted it reduced as much as possible for obvious reasons. Toradad, and our landscape designer, has recommended both plantings and fencing to block car lights. Particular focus for this is on either side of Schulman Way, as well as directly behind the Lodge Street homes on the west side of the road. This is a conceptual plan, and together with neighbors, we'll work out the details. You've spoken already about access to Lodge Street, so, versus other things, but let me just reiterate that we did ask the traffic engineer to calculate that, and you have the details of that in your plan. Two weeks ago, I experienced something I will likely never experience again. I was part of discussions that shifted a road, Schulman Way, 10 feet to the east, two feet to the west. I thought it was very unique. This was the result of neighbor requests to create more of a buffer along Mr. Walsh's property. The plan before you reflects the road placement, as all butters prefer. On the west side of the road, there's the 23-foot strip that you know about, between the property line and the road. This is comprised of planting, sidewalk, and grass strip. The details of this plan are in the utility and profile plan prepared beautifully by Mr. Hanigan. Finally, March 25, the neighbors wanted to make sure that the traffic on the road wouldn't increase in future years, and as we discussed, we agreed shortly after that meeting to put a restriction on the use of that road only for temple, temple purposes. So although this is challenging work, building agreements, when people don't know each other all that well, and when it's hard to find common underlying interests, it's been my joy and a source of personal gratification to lend a hand at finding that path.
The remaining part of the plan that we haven't showed you detail for, even though we've referred to it, is the lighting plan and the landscape, the concept. referred to it, is the lighting plan and the landscape, the concept plan for landscaping. So we'd like to ask Steve Tierney to come up now and explain those plans to everyone, and show us, show you, and show the planning board, first of all, what we're proposing for a lighting plan, which includes specifications. We are asking the planning board to approve these specifications as the requirement that we have to follow. And then for the concept plan for landscaping, there's not a lot of detail yet in that plan, but we have the plan to show you what our intent is, that it is to provide very attractive landscaping along the Lodge Street edge and on each side of the driveway. But details such as whether or not there might be a fence, whether neighbors, if they want a fence, there will be a fence, if they don't want a fence, there won't be. The type of actual plantings has not been determined, because as I said, we have a problem with finding deer-resistant plantings, and we want to spend some time on that. So I'd like, I'll hand over the, oh, you have a microphone, so I'll just let Mr. Tierney speak.
Hopefully, everybody can hear me, but my name's Stephen Tierney. I'm from a firm called StanTech. And so just to talk a little bit about the lighting plan very briefly, I think it was mentioned that the typical pole height is fifteen feet, and we're actually suggesting that the pole height be ten feet, the top of the fixture being roughly twelve feet in height. The reason for this being, as previously mentioned, we want something that has a residential feel, you know, seems like part of the neighborhood. Walking around the neighborhood, there were, there were fixtures that looked very similar to this, you know, maybe a little bit smaller, but we wanted something that had that aesthetic. So we're proposing an LED full cutoff fixture from Sun Valley. It's called the Colonial Fixer, which fits very well with the architecture in the neighborhood. What's nice about the LED is the controllability of the light, so there is next to no light crossing the property line. There's just a slight little bit at the corner here. Everywhere else, there's absolutely no light crossing the property line. These calculations were done in coordination with the lighting manufacturer, and they used the Illuminating Engineering Society data file for this specific fixture. So this is pretty accurate. What this does not take into account is the evergreen and deciduous plantings that will be providing, and potentially the fence. And it's my personal opinion that with those added features, there would be no light crossing the property line at this corner. The reason we, another reason we wanted to go with a smaller fixture is we had concerns over a taller fixture needing to be more powerful to light the roadway adequately. So we feel that by providing three smaller fixtures, the light can be more evenly distributed across the driveway here. And also lowering the height obviously helps with the light crossing the property line.
Steve, before you leave lighting, or I know there may be questions later, but I did want to add that we've had a fair amount of discussion with neighbors and with ourselves about using a technology for the lights that would allow us to turn them on and off, and possibly to dim them. And it's our understanding that there is probably technology available to do that.
Yes.
We haven't, you know, so the aim is to use such technology. Exactly when lights will be on and off might depend on how the site ends up being used or misused after the temple is built, because we all know that sometimes, when you have a parking lot in a sort of secluded area, it becomes a favorite gathering spot and, for young people. And so if that turns out to be the case, then we may want to have the lights on at the neighbor's request at certain times, that we might ordinarily turn them off. The, the plan of, the applicant's plan was that we would like to be able to turn the lights off when there's nothing happening at the temple, and that might even include turning the streetlights off. That would be unusual, but since this is really a driveway and not a street, it may turn out to be the right way, and it would really make the use of the site almost invisible, you know, when there's nothing going on. However, if it's required that we have some lighting all the time for safe, public safety reasons, or because we're having a problem with vandalism, then we would have discussions and we'd agree mutually that that was best. And I think the neighbors have already said maybe it would be necessary, so we're all recognizing that that may be a problem. So anyway, that's a little something extra on the lighting that we've talked about. So could you talk a bit about the landscaping?
Sure. Again, very briefly, this plan, just north is straight up, Lodge Street is on the bottom of the plan here, in the newly, potentially newly created Schulman Way. The landscape concept was primarily to create a landscape that has a residential, more formal feel at the intersection with Lodge Street. And so that area is primarily in line with the front yards of the two adjacent homes on either side. So what we're currently showing, and it's still being, the details are being worked out with, with the neighbors, we're showing fencing along either side of the property line. And as I mentioned, sort of more formal plantings at the Lodge Street intersection, and then as we move up the street into the site, the plantings break down into more native, sort of naturalistic plantings, and the concept was to sort of restore a woodland aesthetic to the landscape. So it's a combination of flowering trees, deciduous canary trees, and evergreen trees, so that it's not just a wall of greenery on either side. It has a very natural feel to it.
Thank you. That's, I'm sure there may be questions later on, and everybody's going to stay in case there are from each of our consultants, but we have one very, well, that pretty much wraps up our presentation. I assume the planning board's going to give me a brief moment at the end so that I can sum up. I'm not going to do it now unless you feel that's better. I'm sure you want to get into the.
A brief moment at the end? We're always happy to give it to you.
Thank you. Okay, it won't be long. So that, that sums up our presentation.
A question, what are you doing about drainage? Drainage?
Mm-hmm. I'm going to have Bob Hannigan talk about it. I also have some more, well, I think Bob can best describe what the plan is.
There's two routes for the drainage. There's, let me begin by showing the existing centerline grade, which is outlined in green, and the proposed grade is outlined in, in red, light red. Currently, there's a high point right here on, on the existing centerline, and we propose a forty-foot vertical curve right here, so the high point is brought back to, to Lodge Street a little bit. And that drainage will be collected in catch basin, one catch basin on, on this side, and an existing catch basin that exists on Lodge Street, and connect into the, an existing storm drain system. The balance of it will drain towards a catch basin at the end of Schulman Way and be recharged on-site. And some recharge chambers at the end of the, end of the road. So from, from here to Lodge Street will be collected in a, in a new catch basin here, an existing catch basin that will be connected to the, is connected to the existing system. And from this point on, will be collected in a new catch basin and recharged on the property.
Okay, and, and is this something that you're going to work out with the DPW?
Yes.
Are you there?
Yes.
Okay, so it would be sewer, water, drainage. You're going to work with the DPW on.
Yes.
Yes, all, all the utilities are underground, water, gas, sewer force main, the drain, and the wires, electric, telephone, and cable, all underground.
Now, does the board have questions for any of the, any of the experts?
Police, police is on right now, too. My question, my question is for the, the gentleman who was up just a moment ago, regarding lighting. Will there be any lighting in, in the property inside the way, around the temple, for parking or whatever?
I can generally address that by saying, we're, we're still developing plans for parking lot and for the building. There will have to be parking lot lighting, and the same general principles that I have articulated would apply to that. If the lighting can be turned off when the parking lot is not in use, like we do at this building, that would be the desire of the applicants, and it will be the desire of the neighbors, unless there are too many people gathering in the parking lot at night and they want the lights on. There will also probably be some type of security lighting on the building, that's pretty normal to have. That would probably just have to be on, but it would not be lighting that would be particularly visible from surrounding properties. The, the lighting that can be intrusive is the parking lot lighting, and our intention would be to not have that on when the building's not in use. Most of the use is actually daytime use, but there would be some things that would go on at night, and in those cases, the lighting would be on while there's an event.
Thanks, Mary.
Yeah, and you, you can use motion detector lights, although when you have deer and turkey walking across the property, they might be on all the time, but you certainly can use motion detector devices, too.
Now, as I mentioned at the beginning, the purpose of this hearing is to basically determine if the proposed street is a satisfactory design, meeting the requirements of law, the rules and regulations of the planning board. And as you heard, there are a number of waivers from the rules and regulations that are being requested, but these are all waivers that could be eliminated. In other words, they say, let us build an eighteen-foot roadway. They could build a thirty-two-foot roadway, but it, that's sort of a waiver, one sidewalk rather than two, no granite curbing. The waivers are really directed at making a better, better design and are, are nothing that, nothing but attempting to, to do just that, make a good design. Now, we have received as much positive correspondence about the use of a new lot for a temple. We've never received as much correspondence. It has been universally in favor of the proposed use. And I, I just say that we have all this, but we are not determining the use. We are talking about whether or not to create a lot, and how it's used. It has to be used for a legal purpose, but the proposed use would be legal and doesn't require the consent of the planning board. So with that in mind, we have some people who want to be heard. We, you can speak in general, if you like, you can address specific parts of the plan, but be as concise as, as possible. So Reverend Jeff Johnson.
Thank you for hearing me. Did you say concise? That's hard.
I think that is.
I come wearing a few hats tonight. I'm the longest-seated member of the Milton Interfaith Clergy Association, so I'm the old man, and I have a historical perspective that's valuable. But first, I have a letter that the clergy, Milton Interfaith Clergy Association wrote to both this board and to the selectmen back in November, and I'm just going to read a few excerpts from it, just so you get the gist, that it's a very supportive letter. "We value the Jewish community as fellow citizens and neighbors, and now it is time for us to support them. We want the relationship we have with the Jewish community to endure and to grow, et cetera." And so we write this letter in encouragement of that. We very much want this to work, because we're afraid that if this doesn't work for whatever reason, that, our greatest fear would be that the Jewish community in Milton might have to find a house somewhere else. And as religious leaders, we all know that having a house of worship in the community where you live is very important for vitality, for future strength. And so we just think that there's a lot at stake here, and we don't want to risk that. And so we're speaking very clearly about it. It was a strong feeling with the clergy association. The clergy association's a neat group, it's the best I've ever been in, it's a very diverse group. We've even had an Imam come once in a while. But we have Jewish, Catholic, Protestant leaders, and I always say the Unitarians because they don't want to be included as Protestants. So, so we have a real wide diversity of groups. I know who my friends are, I'm across the green from them, and I want to honor that friendship. We, we know how fragile religious communities can be. And we've seen the temple show great resilience and the willingness to fight back and to look, and just seeing the presentation that they looked at fifty different sites, I think that was very strong and persuasive for me. It's very difficult to define the impact that a religious group has in a community. If I didn't feel that it mattered, I wouldn't do what I do. But I do, and it's hard to measure, it's tough to prove, but it matters. I'm going to retire in a few months, I'll be done by the end of June, and a woman I know, but she isn't part of my church, stopped me and said, "We're really going to miss you." And I said, "Tell me why." Because I wanted to hear more. And she said, and she said, "You've, you're a fixture in this town. You've become a part of the fabric of this town." And that's what was said about the temple, and that's the way I see the temple. They matter, and I can't prove it or measure it, but I know it's true, because they've been here a long time. They add a tremendous richness to the clergy association, and that's the same model that I see in the town. It would be a shame, it would be a tragedy to lose them or to have them be weakened in any way. They have a great leader, they have wonderful people. I also speak as a landlord, because, representing the landlord, because our church has rented space to the temple now for two and a half years. If you want to get to know somebody, share the same building. We know them well, and we have made some goofs on our end. We've scheduled, oh, we forgot to write down something that they scheduled four months in advance. And so then all of a sudden, we had a conflict. They've been very gracious, very cooperative, very flexible. So they're very noble people, and I, just, just the way I've heard Marvin Gordon and also the Jewish community try to include waivers or other elements that will lessen the impact on the neighbors, that's typical of what I would expect and what will continue. Also, they worship in our place on Saturday morning, and we wondered, you know, we're a busy place, would this impact us in terms of parking and other things? Well, we don't schedule weddings and funerals for Saturday mornings anymore because we want to preserve their parking. But other than that, I really wouldn't know they're there. I mean, they're, they're very respectful, very quiet. They set up, they clean up, they're gone, and I've made great friends. And so I would see that the impact that the worshiping community would have on the neighborhood to be almost not noticeable. Now, I think with the school, and, I mean, not the paid school, but their own in-house teaching, that would, you know, there'd be some traffic. One final thing, it's been a great learning opportunity, and I just want to, I know it's late, but we've all been sitting for a long time, and I don't know how you do it, my people in church won't do it, they would have left an hour ago. So I'm sitting in my house as Yom Kippur, the highest holy day of the Jewish year, and Friday nights, my night off, it's like maybe ten minutes before the sun's going down, so I'm sitting down with my wife, going to watch TV. I get a knock at the door, it's the lay leader from the temple. "Jeff, what? We've got a problem. We have three robes that the rabbi, myself, and the cantor have to wear. We locked them up in an alcove, they're not there. The service is starting in ten minutes. It isn't my fault, but it's on my watch, and somebody in my church thought they weren't safe, so they put them in another place. I don't know where they are." So I'm running through the building with these people, trying to find these robes, and the clock is ticking and the sun's going, I felt like Superman, I want to make this, make the sun go back up a few more minutes, anything. And so finally, we go downstairs, I open up a closet where I keep my robes, and there they are. He says, "There they are." And I, yeah, I put them on, they take off the dry cleaner wrap, they put them on, the three of them are about ready to go in, it's two minutes before sundown, and I almost blurted out, "Thank you, Jesus," but I caught myself in time. out, "Thank you, Jesus," but I caught myself in time. I love these people and they're great for me and they've taught me a lot, so thank you.
John Michael Shields, the second selectman at the evening.
Wow, former selectman, my friend.
Actually, the third.
Yes, actually, the third.
The fourth. We're just full of selectmen.
My name's John Shields and I was a selectman for a number of years, but I also, in between terms as selectman, I served four terms, but two and then two later, I worked for the Flatley Company and I was in charge at the end, I was the vice president for doing what you guys are doing. I represented the company at various towns and cities throughout the New England area. I was in New Hampshire, Maine, I was representing the Flatley Company, Massachusetts. And I have never been to a meeting like this where things looked so smooth. The only time I, in talking to any neighbors about this particular, the production of the, replacing of the facility in this location was that some people thought that the traffic should go out onto the other street, Gun Hill Street. If you think about Gun Hill Street, the hill is on your left-hand side as you come out, you'd really be inviting more, more rough times, you know, accidents if you'd use that way. So they have chosen the right road to use, I think. If we can do what the chief said and work on the, you know, the traffic as it presently is, I think we can cut things down. And these people have been right, the times that they will be busy are not the times that the main traffic is involved in that area. So I think it is something that we should cling to using the street that they proposed. And I think it's a great, great thing for the Gordons to offer this land to these people. Similar things applied many years ago, where my grandfather was actually on the board of the First Catholic Church that came into the town of Milton. And he met a lot of these people, the other religions were, the Jewish religion was forming buildings at the time too, and he got to know them pretty well and got very friendly with them. They never had a traffic problem because they went, when they went to the police, my grandfather was the chief. So he got them right through and that's basically why he was chairman of the St. Mary of the Hills Committee. I think that this is a wonderful, wonderful thing for the town of Milton. And I think that the work that these people have put through to continue having their religion in the town of Milton is a great thing for our town. And I would put on my, take off my Flatley Company coat right now and put on my ex-selectmen's coat and say that I really care about this town. And one of the things that I care about is that people of all types get to live in the town and our children grow up to learn to live with all kinds of people. And I think if the Jewish people are able to continue and have their facility in Milton, it's good for us, it's good for our children, and it's good for the community as a whole. And so I would really appreciate it if you could look at this and accept what Mr. Gordon and Mrs. Gordon are trying to do to help their religion and let's get this done. Thank you very much.
James Holland, yet another selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. It's been some years since I've been here, Mr. Chairman. I think the last time I was here on a subdivision was when the Bartol family brought a proposal forward for, I believe it was a sixty-three lot subdivision on Canton Avenue. I'm pretty certain you were here, Mr. Lynch.
Yes, my friend.
And I came that night and, of course, they're right across the street from me and no one dislikes change any more than me. And I came forward that evening and asked the board that Canton Avenue, the entryway to the new subdivision and Dollar Lane not be made a hallway intersection. That was my request because the Bartol family had a right to subdivide their property and Marvin Gordon and Andrea Gordon have a right to subdivide their property. Mr. and Mrs. Gordon have decided if this subdivision is approved, to construct a temple on that site. Now, I know a little bit about religious organizations and being constructed in residential neighborhoods. St. Mary of the Hills Church is in a residential neighborhood. St. Mary of the Hills Church was constructed eighty-one years ago. There are no parking provisions for St. Mary of the Hills Church with the exception of the pastor, but we all know that the Lord works in mysterious ways. So the only parking that's been provided has been provided for the pastor. But according to the record, in nineteen thirty-three, after quote, "Months and months of bickering, legal difficulties, and limitless planning," on November twentieth, nineteen thirty-three, the land was purchased for the construction of St. Mary of the Hills Church from the Burt family. That was the lower church, that was a basement constructed at that time. It was constructed for as many as eight hundred and fifty people. It was part of the subdivision of Dobby Road, St. Mary's Road, and Crane Road. Eight hundred and fifty people. No parking was provided. I knew that as part of this proposal that there were neighborhood concerns and they've been addressed and been mentioned, but I think they warrant mentioning again. And that is that Mr. Gordon will have as a deed restriction that no commercial activity, no subleasing, no bingo, no connecting road, no thruway will be allowed on the property. And I might say if this was a subdivision, be quite a few homes that could be constructed on that parcel and that the traffic would be seven days a week from that particular subdivision. So St. Mary of the Hills has been in operation for eighty-one years, welcomed in the neighborhood, much beloved in the neighborhood. So the placement of a temple on Mr. Gordon's property and Mrs. Gordon's property should be greeted in the same manner, should be welcomed, and everyone live happily ever after. And those here that didn't speak too kindly about Mr. Gordon a couple of years ago, hopefully they too will step up to the plate and apologize and thank him for his extremely generous gift. Thank you very much.
I want to pay too much time, see my notes? What was that Jewish name, neighbor? The word that you used earlier?
Shagun.
Shagun? I have a great neighbor. I was always told fences make great neighbors, but the Gordons, Andrea and Marvin, make great neighbors. And as soon as I found out that the temple was going to be placed there, I went over and told him, I gave him all of his support, everything I could possibly do to support him on this, for a couple of reasons. One, Fuller Village has kept my mother-in-law away from me for ten years. We're now into our third house over there at Fuller Village and I'm probably going to move in there too. When I was in the service, on Sundays, a fellow officer and I would go to a different church and it was always very interesting because I'm so used to the Catholic masses, they were all in Latin, I didn't understand it, and it was always the same, very boring. And then we'd go to these other, we'd go to these churches and we picked a different one every time and since, the family would always take us home, we'd get to learn more about other people in the neighborhood. And this was, these were in various towns down south and I learned a lot, just through that. So I'm very, very pleased that Marvin has, he's done so much for the town and I just can't believe that people are short-sighted. I mean, he's not doing this for his own pocket and I could see people getting upset if it was, but he's doing this for the right reasons and hopefully, and I kind of expect, I've been to one Jewish ceremony and that was a, I think it's called a bar mitzvah? Whatever, that was a lot of fun. That's all. I will not go to those three or four hour services, I'll probably walk across the yard and go on in and there's an awful lot I need to learn because I have no familiarity with it, so.
I want to say for the planning boards' knowledge that I think, outside of my property, but he has the longest, he has the longest borderline with what is going to be the temple property by substantial, probably longer as a borderline than all the light street neighbors put together.
Good evening, my name is Wallace Sisson. Thank you, Chairman, and Mr. Chairman and the planning board for letting me speak. I am a member of the master plan committee and a member of the historic commission, Milton Historical Commission, and I'm here to speak in favor of the subdivision, in favor of the waivers, in favor of the temple, and in favor of Andrea and Marvin Gordon. Both of them, town meeting members for many years. Andrea was a library trustee on the Milton Visiting Nurses, which doesn't exist anymore, a trustee of the Forbes Museum. Marvin, legendary Milton Hospital, Fuller Village, cable network, recycling and trash, streetlights, warrant committee, selectmen, school committee, amazing. And Schulman Farm is part of Milton history. Marvin and Andrea could have done what others have chosen to do and that is to sell the land to a cluster zoning development or, I think, or even maybe a forty-B. It's big enough and, but instead, they have a carefully planned and thought-out building to enhance the town of Milton and I think we should go forward with it. That's short and sweet, like me.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Hyacinth Kritschlow. I'm a library trustee and I'm also a town meeting member. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the temple. I'm a newbie in town, as most people will say, I've been here for almost thirty years living in town, so I'm considered a newbie. But one thing that had inspired me when I came in town, something really unique happened when I, one day, I looked out my window and I saw this family walking down the street, all dressed up in their Sunday best, going down the street. And I looked and I saw the men had this little yarmulke on their heads and I said, "Oh, they're going to the temple." The temple is like half a mile from my home down the street and I was so fascinated because it became nostalgic to me because in my country, you walk to church from your home. So when I saw this happening, I felt so good and so wonderful and then the next thing I know, I was looking one day and then they weren't doing that anymore. So I wondered what happened, then I realized that the families weren't there anymore and I became very, very sad. And I even spoke to Andrea about it, says, "Andrea, you know, I used to see the families walking," she said, "Well, they don't walk anymore, some of them have moved away and maybe they moved from that location." However, I still became fascinated with the, thought that the temple was right down the street from my home. Then they lost the temple and they moved somewhere else and they became in a limbo. And I thought to myself, a limbo, because they have no place to go. And they looked everywhere for, to buy a piece of land or a building and they couldn't find anywhere to go. And so I felt sad because I know that when, at town meeting, when they were trying to get the building to stay where they are, I was a part of that transition with them not being able to keep their building. So it really made me sad, so I began to pray and fast and I really, literally did it. And one day Marvin said to me, "I have something to tell you, it's a secret, but don't tell He said, "We've donated a piece of land to the temple." And I felt so ecstatic, I said, "Thank you, God." I said, "There is a God." I said, "My prayers got answered because he said some things, sometimes when you pray, he said, when you need things, he said, 'Some things you have to fast and pray for in order to receive it.'" And so that is what I did, I literally fasted for a whole week and, I mean, they know me because they know I don't eat, so when they see me not eating, they think I don't really want the food, but really I'm fasting and praying for what I really want. So finally, they got the land. I'm asking you all this day, please, tonight, please approve this land for them so that they can put the building up because it's an intricate part of the community. Think about it, I often say, this Jewish temple is not only for us, it's also for the God that we pray to every day. We all pray to him at one time or another. And I say to myself, the opponents of this gathering here or for this place of worship, we all go to sleep at night, but none of us, not one person in this room, knows when we pass from the transition of awake to sleep. But yet, we wake up every single morning, you wake us up. Nineteen years ago, I had a friend, we played tennis every day, we did everything. She was twenty-nine years of age. There's no physical medical reason for her that the doctors could come up with, but she went to bed and she never woke up. And I thought about that. We go to bed every night and you wake us up the next day. It's given us a chance to... It's given us a chance to do the right thing. Every day, we wait, we have a chance to do something right for someone. So, I said to myself, here it is. A scribe said to Jesus, the Rabbi Jesus, because he's a rabbi, and our God is a rabbi, is a Jewish God, and a scribe said to him, "Rabbi, or master, tell me where your dwelling place is, so that I can follow you." And Jesus turned to him and said, "Foxes of holes, birds in the air have nested, but the Son of Man has no place to dwell his head." And I'm asking you tonight, please let us give our Jewish God a place to lay his head by approving this land. I thank you.
We've got fourteen more people on the list, so just bear in mind, it's, be concise. Cheryl Togayis.
Good evening, Chairman Whiteside, and members of the board. Most of you know that I am Cheryl Togayis. It's ironic that I became active as a citizen of Milton, four years ago, or thereabouts, when I volunteered to serve on the Planning Board's Temple Study Committee, when the temple was looking to sell their property on Blue Hill Avenue. Since that time, I joined the warrant committee, I've joined the Master Plan Committee, I've run for office, and I continue to follow what would happen with Temple Shalom. We have, I think, a unique opportunity here, for our Jewish community, to build their house of worship, and I think this is an opportunity that we shouldn't let go by. As an architect, I'd like to speak to the zoning parameters and issues of the subdivision. This land, when subdivided, the temple can build within the boundaries of all the zoning requirements, from setbacks, to footprint, to total FAR, to height, to open space, parking, et cetera. There is, the impact of a building of this size would be minimal for most of the community, and in particular, this community. There are some homes that are nearby that are about the same size of this proposed new temple. The street with the proposed waivers, I think would make for a more attractive street, more attractive for the neighbors. The lighting has been discussed, the technology that's available today, the lighting impacts can be greatly reduced. There's ample room for screening, there's ample room for the parking. So, I think we should seize this opportunity and approve this request for subdivision, so that the temple can get along with building a new home. Thank you.
Peter Mullen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Peter Mullen, nineteen Gaskins Road. In light of the hour, let me just say that I've reviewed the application, I've reviewed the traffic study, it seems absolutely clear that this subdivision plan meets all your requirements, the waivers that are requested are minimal, we've heard wonderful testimony tonight as to why this is important for the town, and I'd urge you to approve it. Thank you.
Joseph Patrick O'Malley.
How you doing? Again, my name is Joseph Patrick O'Malley. I'm a thirty-five-year resident of eighty-four Decker Street. I wanted to speak about traffic, and I know the police chief addressed that issue regarding Lloyd Street, but I want to speak from the perspective of living near Temple Shalom for thirty-two years. As you know, Temple Shalom was at the corner of Decker and Blue Hill Ave. And in talking with my wife about how they were as a neighbor, first and foremost, they were great neighbors. The traffic generated by Temple Shalom frankly came from the preschool that was located in the lower level of the temple. Parents would drop off their kids in the morning, and then pick up their children in the afternoon. But as has been stated earlier, there's a deed restriction, that would not occur. Now, let me also state that that was not an issue for us. In talking with my neighbors on Decker Street, you know, over the years, there was never any complaints about that. The temple has been a great neighbor to us for thirty-two years, they maintain their property. One of the things that I take great pride in is that I got to know Rabbi Benjamin. I regard him not only as a friend, but as also as my rabbi. I thank you, and shalom.
Good evening, my name is Mary McNamara, I live at fifteen Brayburn Road, I am also a town meeting member from Precinct Eight. The new temple will be located in Precinct Eight. I'm here to support Congregation Beth Shalom's request to the Planning Board for subdivision approval, and for the waivers which have been requested. I was actually invited to walk the proposed site by a couple of temple members, which I did do. It is a lovely, large, vacant lot, lots of mature trees, bushes, a beautiful, flat terrain. It's a very contemplative spot, it's quiet, very natural, and yet, it is close by to a bustling neighborhood, and to several busy commuter streets here in our town. But you know what, that is exactly where a faith community should reside. It's my understanding that the temple membership has worked hard to be sensitive to the neighborhood concerns, I'm not going to outline how those issues have been resolved here, because they've been hashed out earlier, but these solutions seem to have assuaged many of the neighborhoods' neighbors' concerns, and basically assured the community here that the temple has the neighborhood's interests at heart. It goes without saying that our town is a town which embraces many different faiths. The temple membership here has always been among the very first to welcome other faith communities. This development by the congregation will allow an important community asset to resettle in a permanent home. The temple has been a vital part of the fabric of the town of Milton, its culture, and its presence continues to deeply contribute to our sense of community. I would ask the Planning Board to support the construction request tonight. Thank you.
Darnell Turner.
Hello, my name is Darnell Turner, warrant committee member, neighbor of Temple Shalom when they were on Blue Hill Ave. Temple Shalom has always been a great neighbor. They talk about the bingo, it was like once every other couple of weeks, the community got used to it, that's not going to be there, it's not an issue. They talk about schools, and having the school there, again, was really never an issue. It was handled well and worked well, it's not going to be there. Put on my warrant committee hat for a second. When I was listening to what was being proposed, I was a little surprised, because most of the developers I hear who come through and talk about developments are things that are not going to really benefit the community, but temple has put handcuffs on themselves on things they will not let happen, to make sure the community maintains its current stature, trying to be the least evasive, and I was like, "Wow, can we get some more of these?" Literally. Listen to a couple of zoning articles when they come through the warrant committee, listen to a couple of zoning articles when they go to here. It's, I think, a big positive, and show you where the heart of the temple membership is, in that they're trying to keep the neighborhood in the same footprint and stature as it is, and be less evasive, and come in and become part of the neighborhood, and again, be a good neighbor. And I think that's what we want to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Joe McCetrick, Precinct One, and a long-term resident of Cron Street with my wife Marion. And I know you're anxious to get to a vote, and I'll be very brief, but what struck me in watching the proceedings is that oftentimes, as a selectman or holding office, one wonders, especially in development situations, who are these people that are seeking the development? Can this, can they really be trusted? And I think that we have to keep in mind the idea of trust and good faith. There will be some waivers, there are a lot of regulations, there's covenants, there's promises, but what it comes down to is, you've got a developer that is very much interested in following those matters to the letter, and also doing the best, providing for the best interests of the neighborhood, and for the community. So, I think you should rest assured that that is not a problem in this situation, and it's really different for many development matters that come before the Planning Board. And as others have said, and I won't prolong this, but clearly, seeing Marvin and Andrea over the years, working for the town and on many projects, we know that they are in good faith, that they can be trusted. As members of the neighborhood surrounding the former Temple Shalom, we saw for thirty-five years what good neighbors they were, we were impressed with their reverence, with people coming to temple, and I'm sure that the Lloyd Street neighborhood will see the same, will observe the same, and also will have the benefit of a temple in their area, which will become a neighborhood resource. So, I certainly endorse the proposal, and thank you very much for your attention.
Emily Goldman.
My name is Emily Goldman, and I live on Thatcher Street with my wife and six-year-old daughter. We moved to Milton almost nine years ago. Although I had attended services at the temple while it was still in its Blue Hill Avenue home, it was not until I joined that I discovered what a warm and welcoming community it is. This past fall, we enrolled our daughter in Hebrew school, and began to participate in more temple-sponsored activities. At every event at which we've participated, my family, including my wife, who's a member of First Parish, have been welcomed with open arms. Through our increased participation, I've come to recognize that being an active part of this spiritual community in Milton has made me feel more at home in the town than ever before. One of the many reasons I joined the temple was that I wanted our daughter to be knowledgeable about and take pride in her Jewish heritage. As a child, I had yearned to be a part of a spiritual community, and recognized how powerful such an experience could be, particularly when it's an integral part of the fabric of one's hometown. I wanted that for my daughter. Moreover, I wanted her to understand that, even if she's one of few Jewish children in her class or school, she is part of this history, and part of a living history, of Jewish people whose life experiences have enriched the town of Milton. I urge you to approve the temple's subdivision request, so that the temple can remain in Milton, for the sake of families like my own, and to continue Milton's important tradition of inclusiveness and religious diversity. Thank you.
Now, the next person is something of a puzzler, but his first name is Brian, and he doesn't write very clearly.
There'll be an opportunity for Trent to talk. Sorry for that illegibility. Thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you, members of the Planning Board. I'm Brian Walsh, and I'm fortunate to serve as town moderator. And I'm currently actually finishing, if I, as I finish my current term, I'll have completed twenty years of townwide office service to the town. And a few things, a few lessons that I've learned, that I think are important to bring up, that are relevant here, are, our community really is only as strong as the diversity of its makeup. It really is. And there are many, many people in this room, there are many here at the table, there are many throughout the room, who have served this town admirably, and significantly, and that is also very, very true of our Jewish community. One of the roles I have is filling many committee positions as moderator, that are important to the town. And I can tell you, our Jewish community has been terrific at serving this town, and those appointed boards as well. Now, change is not often easy, but frequently, it's rewarding, when you get out that back end. And I honestly and strongly believe, the change of having this temple in a neighborhood that really is my neighborhood, I live very close by, is going to be a significant, rewarding I'm not a member of the temple, in fact, I was raised a Catholic, I attended Saint Agatha School in East Milton, and as a Catholic, I've raised my three children in the town, in Saint Elizabeth's Parish. But it's sort of interesting, as a Catholic, I had choices, I could have been, raised my children at Saint Elizabeth's, Saint Agatha's, or Saint Mary's, actually, even another church if we went back just a little bit. And it's important as a family, to have that place of worship, however you choose to worship, close by, in a part of your community. I think of my children participating in their sacraments, from baptism, dependents, to the Eucharist, and even, just a few years back, my oldest daughter being married, in my local church, that's important to us as a family. It certainly has to be important to our Jewish community here. And I have so many options, all in Milton, but unless this board takes the first step tonight, to approve going forward with this plan, our Jewish community does not have that option. And I think, as a whole, as a community, if we don't step forward and do our best to make sure that this temple can be a reality, this community as a whole is something less. So, I urge you to support this, I hope you will support it, and I welcome the opportunity to see that temple built on that property. Thank you.
My name is Chris Stone, I live on Lloyd Street with my wife and children, and our property backs up to the temple site. My neighbor and friend, Aileen Kenny, is here tonight as well. I promise, I'm not here to rain on the good feelings, but it's important to me and my neighbors that we're impacted a little differently than most of the people in this room. Quite frankly, I'm a little concerned, I'm not going to be applauded. Quite frankly, I'm a little concerned I'm not going to be applauded when I leave here. Initially, our neighborhood had concerns about this construction site, and, and some of them are still ongoing. But to be clear, our issue with the construction was, I'm sorry, to be clear, our issue was with the construction of a large gathering site. It by no means was against a, the temple or the members of the congregation. I cannot be, I cannot be more clear about that. Some of our larger concerns still exist and will, I think will be addressed. However, the Temple leadership led by Ronit Voit, Ada Rose Marin, their lawyer Marion McHettrick, and Marvin and Andrea Gordon have worked with our neighborhood to address some of our initial concerns. We appreciate their willingness to listen and proactively address the issues already and hopefully to mitigate some of the impact. Our neighborhood, like I said, still has some concerns that we, that we hope will address at the appropriate time, and it's, it's not necessarily here, but at the appropriate time. But our recent interaction gives us faith that our concerns will be addressed appropriately. I don't get a opportunity a lot to speak in front of the town or anything like that or, and here. One thing I just want to address that's been brought up a couple of times today, and I don't feel it's been accurate. Chief Wall and other people have said that the traffic, and I, I know and we know living there, that the traffic on the, on the street would exist if the temple was built or not. Our issue was never, necessarily always traffic, but it would exist whether it was or not. The volume of cars and the speed at which they travel on our street is an issue. To say it isn't is uninformed at best. We have made our concerns known to the police and to the town, and nothing has happened. I understand it takes time to make change, but it's been long enough. Temporary measures can be put in place while we wait for the state or the town to pursue a solution that's more permanent. That also may never happen. Please, you know, the town and chief of police and stuff can feel free to contact me directly, but they will definitely be hearing more from our neighbors and, and myself on this. But that's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Elizabeth Roseout.
Thanks for, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Jonathan Pinkus. It's late, so I'll be very brief. I live at 202 Edgell Road with my wife Donna, my eight-year-old daughter Samantha, and my two-year-old son Joshua. We've been in Milton for 10 years, and somehow after like two years in Milton, we were quoted in Money Magazine for why it's so great to live in Milton. We love the diversity of the town and everything the town has to offer. I work just over the river in Dorchester. And it's, it can be challenging, I think, to raise children in the United States Jewish in a culture that, the overwhelming culture of the country is different, and school holidays are different than the holidays we celebrate. And having a synagogue in Milton has meant a lot to our family, being able to raise our children Jewish and to live in Milton. It's been challenging the last few years, not having a home. It's been great, the generosity of other groups in the town and being able to have services in town and have a religious school, but it's not the same as a, as a real permanent home. We've looked for years, had lots and lots of properties and everything possible to find a new home. And I think this has been a tremendous gift from Mr. Gordon to allow the temple to stay in, in Milton and to allow families like ours to raise our children in our own community with our own faith. So I think I've been incredibly impressed from the temple side at how seriously all the concerns of the neighbors have been addressed and how genuinely the congregation has been working to try and work with the community behind the scenes to really address what's best for the town and for the community. And I hope you'll approve it so that I can see my daughter have her bat mitzvah and my son have his bar mitzvah in Milton and the temple. Thank you.
Peter Jackson. Scott Johnson.
You know, I wish that the people who are going to be able to watch this on TV could be in this room to feel the feeling that I felt all night here. At first, I was surprised seeing the, the contentiousness that oftentimes goes on in the town at meetings such as this. But knowing the, the limited knowledge I have of Judaism, and I'm not Jewish, it's not surprising at all, and I think it's been an excellent example of the teaching that goes on in a shul or a synagogue of doing good work, good deeds, teaching gentle arts like gratitude, graciousness, kindness, humility, discretion, expansiveness. And this has been a very expansive meeting. And in light of what happened in Pittsburgh today, what we need is probably more of that as opposed to less. We need more of this kind of teaching in our culture and our society. And I think that when you look and see how many Nobel laureates have come out of the Jewish religion, the education that they've put and what the contributions have been, I think it's a great enhancement to our culture. And I'm grateful that I've been able to be surrounded by and influenced by many Jewish people in my life. And I, I'm all in favor of the shul. I think it would be a great loss not to have this and a tremendous benefit to even those neighbors. When you walk into a hospital, if you're in a butter that's against this, I want you to look on the wall of the donor list, and you'll see that most of those names are Jewish. And I benefited from it, my family's benefited from it, and I imagine there's probably not a person in this room that hasn't benefited from the generosity that's taught in that religious institution. And I thank you.
Hello, my name is Aileen Kenny, and I live at 17 Lodge Street with my husband and my two children. I just want to say a few words, very brief, and start with clarification that we, we have never been opposed to the use of the property for a temple. Our concerns of surrounded traffic and access, and they're specific, they're legitimate, and they're under the purview of the review of the planning board tonight for the subdivision. So the, the temple did address many of our concerns in their initial application, I think to the best of their ability, including completing a traffic study. Since the application was filed, we had a neighborhood meeting where we drafted a list of concerns. We met with the temple and brought them to their attention. They have further refined their plans as they presented tonight to address our concerns specifically regarding lighting, road layout, and the future access to Gun Hill Street via Lot 29M. We support all of those changes and the associated waivers. It's my opinion that the planning board should approve the subdivision application before them tonight. It does meet the criteria for approval, and the Lodge and Maitland Street community looks forward to continuing to work with the temple as the building plan is developed. Thank you.
All right, that's, that's the end of the panel on the list, and I think the planning board is willing to get on with it. What I would suggest to the board is we determine whether or not we are willing to grant the requested waivers.
Mr. Chairman, do you wish to close the public hearing first or to hold our discussion as part of the public hearing?
I think we should close the public hearing.
In that case, I move we close the public hearing.
You're going to let Marion do her summation?
Oh.
Oh, oh, oh.
Do you want a summation, Darren?
You'll get your, your quick summation.
You know, there really have been so many good short remarks and long remarks made tonight that I, there isn't really much that I can add to this, except to say that we feel we've presented a, a good subdivision application that complies with the Milton zoning bylaw and the subdivision regulations, except for the waivers. We think the waivers are well justified. We've designed a safe and accessible road. It's a good site for the temple. The use is going to be limited by the conditions, the size of the temple, and all of the, the buffers and, and various aspects of the plans that we've explained to you. There will continue to be a discussion of traffic in this neighborhood, and the temple's going to become one of the neighbors that will be entering into that discussion and maybe even a strong voice that will help resolve some of those problems favorably. So it, it, you know, it's happened in other neighborhoods. It sometimes does take a while, and it, it is hard to move the police and the traffic commission and those selectmen to get them to decide to vote for, you know, a, a limited entry sign or speed bumps or whatever it is the neighborhood comes up with. But that can, that discussion's going to continue, and hopefully it will, things, the traffic's not going to get less, but hopefully measures can be taken and everybody can agree on them together and go to those boards with the proposal. So I, I would say, just in conclusion, you know, it has been a very difficult path for Congregation Beth Shalom from their decision that they had to leave their previous building to this day. They've looked at so many other options, and none of them came to fruition. Years have passed, and this generous gift that they've finally been offered does make it possible at last to design a suitable place of worship that can once again become a place in our community for Congregation Beth Shalom. So we respectfully request that each member of the planning board support this application. It has been carefully designed to meet subdivision requirements and to ensure that the use will be compatible with the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to close the hearing.
Do we have a second? A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? The hearing is closed. Let's, we have a number of waivers here, and I suggest we can consider them in bulk.
Yes, I agree.
Whether to grant the waiver of 32 feet to allow, 32 feet of pavement to allow an 18-foot roadway, waive sidewalks on both sides of the road to allow one sidewalk on only one side, waive the requirement for granite curving, waive the 4.6-foot planting requirement for a tree lawn to allow three feet so as to provide additional space on the outside, and waive the 90-degree intersection angle to allow a 94-degree 6-minute intersection angle.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we allow the waivers as written in the application and also as you just enumerated.
Great, you to grant the waivers.
Grant, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I would second that motion. I think it's all in the best interest of the neighborhood, so.
And I would agree that we have certainly set a precedent for most of these waivers before and previous subdivision decisions that we've made.
And it's a much better plan with the waivers. I mean, there's no question about it.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor? All right.
We've granted the waivers now. The question of subdivision approval comes, and we are going to take a vote to approve this in general, subject to the conditions which have been specified earlier by Mrs. McHettrick. And they will be.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we, can we say anything before we take the vote?
Oh, yes. We're going to have a discussion.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We're going to have a discussion.
I'm ready to vote.
And I, I'd agree. I think that we should, in any event, subject to those waivers and of course, subject to the DPW, agreeing with the engineer, Mr. Hannigan, as to the proper way of proceeding with sewers, water, and drainage. But we would be approving the subdivision application, subject to that written decision, which we would anticipate having at our next meeting. So with that motion and a second, we will have a discussion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion. And I, I think that it would be appropriate at this point for the board members to say whatever they may care to say about this application and the way it has been handled.
Mr. Chairman, I call for the vote. We've talked enough tonight.
Jim, I'd like to say a few words.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ed Duffy, member of the planning board. Without a doubt, the hand of God guided and directed this application. One thing I would like to say is we haven't talked much about the children in the neighborhood. I hope that it can be designed so that the children of the neighborhood, when services aren't being conducted, will have access to the area to play in a safe environment and even perhaps a walking path for the, for the, those who are as old as me to enjoy the beautiful sight there in a beautiful setting of peaceful and tranquil setting. So remember the children and remember guys like me, okay? Thank you.
I'm ready for the vote.
All right. I'll just say one thing very quickly. First of all, the planning board, of course, is concerned with the technical requirements of the Subdivision Control Act and of the application in front of us. And I would like to commend the applicant on a very clear application with all of the information necessary for us to make our decision. That doesn't always happen. It's not often that we can hold a public hearing and come to a vote in a single night, and the applicant should be commended for giving us the information. We need to do that. The second thing I wanted to say is that it is also rare that a planning board gets to make a decision with such import as the decision that we are making tonight. And it is testimony, I think, to the strength of our community to see so many people here speaking for members of our community, and I wanted to thank you all for being here tonight.
I'd just like to say that it appears that the only significant impact seems to be the traffic, and it seems as though I've heard that the traffic is a significant situation before the establishment of the temple. And the congregation has shown such resolve, I hope that in becoming a member of this community or this neighborhood, always a member of the community, that you help in the resolve of the traffic situation for the good of the whole neighborhood.
I, I think that everyone who's participated in this hearing deserves to be commended. And I, I think it's been a remarkable hearing, and I'm pleased to be able to call this to a vote. All in favor? Aye. A written decision will be prepared, and we hope to have it signed next, next meeting.
Which is the 23rd?
Which would be the 23rd.
Yes.
Now, Margaret, why don't you just come right up and take your seat? Now, Margaret, why don't you just come right up and take your seat? Why don't we, I guess we're going to take a five-minute break and see if we can clear some of these people out of here.
Where's the, where's the police chief? Hey, where's the police chief? Go to the police.
Well, if you get the police chief back, we've got everyone out. Well, I, I never, I always assumed that the mites may be trying to pick up something. Good job, and we look forward to getting this built. Right away. Now, when you exit, get those people, just push them out of the road.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to start us off on our last?
We want Mr. Clark to give us the overview.
I don't know, I think he's, he's pushing.
I ate a big lunch, so when I got home, I said, "No, I'll wait."
All right, I think that we have, we have ignition. Mr. Clark, we are waiting for you to, to.
Hold ideas. Rejoin the.
Tell us about the next agenda item.
Thank you. We're getting a lot of calls on 36 Central's parking. The issue is one of, as the special permit was developed, one of the, the discussion went to sharing the parking in the back with the business district. The, the owners of, the condo association of 36 Central would like to be able to just keep the building for its own commercial and the commercial at 20 to 34 Central. When other people come into the lot, they're very aggressive that, you know, it's not parking for anywhere except for those two buildings. This is one of those ones of, we have people who have the commercial units parking in the two-hour parking. They're not abiding by the, you know, park down back in their own spot, or get the service own sticker and park around over on Brook Hill or up on Elliott. It's one of those issues that you said to me, you know, go fix part of the problem. Well, that's, condo association doesn't want the liability of having everybody in the neighborhood in their lot, so they're aggressively going after people that want to go to one of the establishments across the street, go in for five minutes, come back, move their car, and it's like, no, no, no. They're just, it's, it's not up to me to take and enforce the parking part, and I'm looking for guidance from the board on, any help you want to, you want to give.
Can I ask for clarification on something you said? Did you say that the people in the commercial condo units are using the two-hour parking for their own employees?
Couple of them, yes.
But they have availability of parking in the back?
Yes, they do.
So, why, I, I'm confused, because I would think that they would be hurting their own business.
Yes, they are.
So, how does the condo association first enforce its own members and their parking?
You know, I went there last week just with the idea to go look and see what the problem was. I did go to park in the spots in the back of the building that are supposed to be open to the, those two buildings. All those spots were taken, and that's not the first time. I've gone a couple of different times. Every time I go, those spots are taken.
By members of the public?
I don't know who they are, but they're, they're always taken. I do know that the, that the, the parking spaces that are on the O'Neill property were not, were not completely full, but I know the ones that we designated as the shared spots in the back were always full. It seems to me it's the same cars, but I'm not reading the license plates to try to figure it out. Maybe I should have. It's, are the spaces available to the district, or are they going to be just for the people of those two buildings? I know that there was a discussion with the O'Neill building that they would take and give an individual parking space to the people in their building. Well, that works on the property, on, on the spaces that are on their property, but that doesn't go back to the spaces that are on 36 Central across the back, and I do know that one or two of those spaces has been given to somebody from that building.
Why don't we have the building inspector do his job?
Do, do what?
Do his job. Isn't he the deciding factor to enforce the zoning bylaws?
This is a special permit.
I'm, I'm with Alex. This is a special permit, and this goes back to the issue of, the discussions were that it was open to the planning board?
We should.
No, I think we'd get ourselves into quite enough trouble. We don't need a police.
I mean, during the, during the discussion.
One of us could be the police chief. Why don't we hear from Margaret, the house, see what she has to say about this? Are these spaces 10 to 15 we're talking about?
I thought they were 11 to whatever.
I don't know. It says spaces 10 to 15 on the parking plan shall be available part-time to the hour of 20 to 34 Central Avenue.
Yep.
And shall be restricted by easement to the exclusive use by businesses that rented to 34 Central Avenue daily between 8:00 and 6:00 p.m. as such owner may designate. Doesn't that cover it pretty well?
It does, so it says it's for those two, those two buildings.
But isn't that what they're saying they want? I mean, are they just wanting?
They are, they're just being.
Enforcement of this paragraph on page, whatever, spaces, I think it looks sort of clear to me, but.
Let's get an idea of the problem.
Spaces shall be available for the exclusive use by retail and office tenants and their customers between.
All right, Margaret, what is the problem, and how do we solve it?
Would you like to be me addressing you after that?
You've been very patient.
They were, they were very eloquent, very articulate, and working together for a common cause. It was very, it was very, very impressive. I am here to tell you about a war zone, the Central Avenue Business District. The, the two commercial buildings, the nail place and the, and the flip place, the hairdresser place, the customers do not park in the back. They park on the street, taking away parking spaces from the other shops and stores, businesses in the area. Today, an example, I was across the street talking to Karen, who's back now developing that central office that they couldn't sell for two years, so they're going to use it as their own. Well, he did tell me today that he did get a ticket from the police, as have several of the other owners of, proprietors, I should say, of the shops in the area. The ones that are having the most difficulty are the plate, and I know that they, they probably are looking to get spaces in the back of 36 Central. Unfortunately, as I said, the customers of the two businesses at 36 Central are not going into the back, and I have been there today when there were quite several spaces where those people could have been parked. They are there for an hour at least, having their nails done or having their hair cut, and they were taking away the spaces from the street. It's my understanding that when that permit was written, that I was disappointed to find out, because I thought that the parking in the back of 36 Central was going to be open to all of the businesses in the area, not just those at 36 Central. But it appears as though the language of that permit suggests that only the, only the customers of the two businesses there, plus now the, the office building in the middle, have the right to park there, and so, and they're not, and they're not. They are definitely taking away the available spaces on the street. I had to watch, and I have a, I have a no-parking zone in front of my place, and occasionally I have to call the Milton Police, because I went down to, before they got tagged, I went down to the flip, and I was treated very flippily by the, by the hairdresser there, because I went in to see if the customer was the one that was parked in the no-parking zone that's in, in front of my house, and she was, "No, it's not her car." And then he said, "Would you like to come out and talk?" And he says, "Don't you ever do that again." I said, "No, tell me to my shop." I said, "I certainly will not. From now on, I will do what the Milton Police told me to do, call them, and they will come down and tag." And that's what's going down, going on, down in my war zone. So, I don't have an answer to how you're going to solve this. It's a nightmare, and it's getting, it's going to get worse, because I talked to Suzanne the other day, the owner of the plate, and of course, it hasn't been that busy with the, with the winter and the storms, not unlike the March 2012 when she opened, it was so warm. But where will they all come? Where will they come and sit in her, in with the, under the umbrella tables? I don't know where they're going to park. You will recall that I came before this board, I've been before the Board of Selectmen, when 36 Central was a parking lot, and one day, I, just out of curiosity, because I certainly had better things to do, but I counted the cars in there. By that time, the Fallon ambulance had left their location on Elliott Street, so it was not those cars that were there, but there were 47 cars in that lot, 47 cars. A couple of them were MBTA packers, but most of them were people who worked in the area. So, you tell me how you're going to resolve that situation down there, and that's why I have shedded when you talked about 131 Elliott Street, because then it's going to even get worse.
All right. Now, I suggest that you authorize me to read this material and consult with Mr. Clark on a strategy.
Which you will then come back to us on the 23rd and discuss?
Right.
Love it. It's a great idea.
Read what material? Oh, okay.
All the stuff that created the shed parking.
Okay.
And Mr. Clark had a look-up enthusiasm on his face.
He did, I noticed that, yes.
I took defeat, a wholehearted agreement. Shall we do that?
Yes.
This is a great idea. Wait, I've got a question for Margaret, though.
Several questions.
Just one question for Margaret.
Margaret, I don't know what you're doing April 30th, but that's when the master plan is having its roundtable on vibrant mixed-use districts, otherwise known as our business zones. Would you please come to that? And the reason I'm asking you is because you have some of the most specific direct experience, especially in Central Avenue. No, with, with the difficulties of parking in our business districts, and one of the things that quite often happens in planning when you're thinking about things is everybody comes up with wonderful new uses for places, and they don't necessarily think of things like parking, which remain important. So, if you can make that, it's at Glover at 7:00. I am being very serious in saying that I would really like to have you there.
Thank you. Now, where is it and when?
Glover.
What time, what time?
7:00 o'clock. Glover School, April 30th. So, if you can make it, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yours.
We'll see you soon.
I'll just send her an email. What's your email address?
You're still, you know, the, I'm not sure what the saying is.
Collectively, I've never looked so nice.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, do we have any other business tonight?
I thought we were dealing with Ned. Just Ned.
Just Ned.
What time is it? Ned, what time is it?
We're not going to tear the building down, do you?
They're on their agenda, are they on their agenda?
Oh, he did, they did a new build, a new agenda that he didn't give you.
It says revised.
The revised agenda. I only just, did not have the revised agenda.
Nor do I.
And I don't have any agenda, so. But now I do, unless.
Are we having a break?
This is 36 to 50 Elliott Street. Update.
It's an update, and it will be very brief.
A brief update.
Had a long evening.
That's what the other groups said.
Were you here from the beginning?
I was.
Well, good for you.
Did you learn anything?
Getting late.
Opportunity is great.
All right.
So, the reason why we're here, if you've been by 36 to 50 Elliott Street, you'll notice that there's a very large structure now existent on the property. Which I'm pleased to say that from what, all indications that I've had, my neighbors are reasonably pleased with how it looks. I think with the roof line on, the building really looks good. And I was recently in it with Jim and the, the units are going to be spectacular. They're large, they're large, tall ceilings. Got a couple of things that deals with some specific requirements of the special permit. Were adopted by recommendations made by the architect with respect to certain of the materials. And there are in fact, three or four items in particular. So I have copies of the relevant pages, the page from the special permit, which identifies six specific details to be included. The first is that the shingles on the roof would be a guaranteed, certainty landmark series architecture asphalt shingle. Color Stonegate gray or shingles of equal or greater quality, matching, closely matching the color to Stonegate gray. The manufacturer no longer makes the Stonegate gray, but does make a.
No, this is the new version.
Makes a colonial gray.
Colonial gray.
Which is close.
Well, they call this colonial gray.
Same manufacturer?
They don't have, same manufacturer.
So it's basically the same shingle?
Yeah, but it's a different name, I just want, I don't want to.
Since you're the same shingle.
It does sound great, it has a lot of green, I agree.
So the green is really what goes underneath the next oval like shingle. But there is no. Even the body.
So it's colonial gray rather than stone gray.
It's colonial gray and it's close to the color of the slate that's on the roof of the Henry House. The second is that.
Does the architect agree?
Yes. And we did share with the revitalization committee.
Did they agree?
They agree. And they agree with each other, recommendations that were made. I did forward to Bill a, an email from John Zickowitz. He polled his membership, they all agreed.
So if it's a closely matching color, you can do it.
Right. The second one is item number three, which addresses the issue of the brick, which is on the lower level of the building. That it would be redland brick extruded rustic thirty. And this is not.
Extruded was the black and the, the architect felt that this more matched the neighborhood of all the other brick buildings in the area, or this brick.
And this is non-extruded.
What's the so-called grout?
The grout line is to gray, there was, the grout line's the same. They're full bricks, that's just a small sample.
Oh, they are full?
They're full brick, they're real brick, that's just a carryable plate.
I think they're fine.
No, it's the mortar in between them, but yeah.
Yeah, the mortar's staying the same.
We're not changing the mortar.
We're not changing the border.
All right, we, but somehow we've got to be able to check on this. Have you written down what you're, what you're proposing?
Yes, I did, I attached it to an email and I'll forward it with a follow-up memorandum to the board. The third item.
Before we forget.
I will do it too sweet.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Not tonight, I don't want to ruin your night.
It's almost tomorrow.
The third item is the lighting over the entries and porches to the building. They were to be built into the roof lines of the, of the eaves. And we're proposing to change, this is the one where there is a, is a change. And I have samples, at least cut sheets of the proposed, which we think are a better approach. We showed that to John Zickowitz this evening, he agreed that that was a better approach. He was here, but needed to get home with his son. So we're proposing that we would put this type of a wall sconce with a downward pointing light fixture on the side of the, the wall, on the walls. In exchange, in, in place of the, the ceiling candles, which would go, and we think it's a more attractive.
More residential.
How does this go downward? It looks to me like it goes.
Well, shooting, you know, it's frosted glass, it shoots down. Compared to the can way up in the steel.
Glass keeps it true.
Are you going to use the LED lights?
I believe it did, I think it fit in there, but I believe we're putting LEDs.
Okay, because that also, LED allows you more control downward as well.
Does the tenant control the?
Yes, just switch.
This light on, this light off, you know.
Yeah, but they're, they're residents.
But how's it look outside, you know?
Well, the common areas will be timers. But these are, these are for, you know, the porches.
On the deck.
Yeah, because they're separately metered.
Yeah, that's why not, six, height 10 and a half, yeah, they should be fine. These, these are.
Two, two.
It's just basically giving a little bit of light on the balconies, right?
International place and the size of the light fixtures there.
I haven't seen international place, but this is definitely.
Don't remember, the light fixtures are the principal feature of that building. Other than the fact that there are more Palladian windows in that building than in any other building. Or any other city in the world.
You know that the light fixtures at Fenway Park are one of the principal features at Fenway Park?
These are not Fenway Park style fixtures, unfortunately.
These are residential scale.
No, they're, they're a nice residential size.
You're a fixture expert.
I'm, I'm happy with these, especially to use LEDs.
Marrowana expert.
Marrowana zoning.
Which bulb are you using?
The LED.
There's three of them.
Which one are you suggesting?
Well, one of them is not an LED, it's eight, 19. I don't know, you could do either the eight water, the 13.5. I'm, I'm happy with either of them, I mean, but the eight's fine.
Where are the LEDs?
They're here, they're, they're the replacement of the bulbs.
They're really for the, really.
Oh, 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 under the bulbs.
Yeah.
Under the bulbs.
And they're really, they're really.
They are the bulbs, as it were.
Right outside, right.
In other words, as soon as the bulb, they're on their own.
No, 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 that's, that's what the LED, the LEDs last forever.
They last forever?
Forever and ever and ever, all right, longer than an incandescent.
Ten years.
Exactly.
All right, fine. What else?
That's it.
That's all you came for?
That's all we came for, we just, without going ahead and doing it ourselves, we wanted to just make sure that we were proactive and gave the board an opportunity to review and.
All right, I think that we want to make sure that we, we get the information.
In writing.
I will give you a.
But I do believe it's the minimus to their.
It is, I, I think that, well, I mean, some of this stuff is like, one is permitted under one.
But it's nice to be informed.
The bricks, I think are of greater quality, are they not?
Yes.
And they have a better texture and color, but it's still similar. And then the lighting is, I don't see that, I mean, that must be on the plan, what, what the deal is.
From cans to residential version, or residential.
Yeah, for the residential, I think this is nicer than the cans.
If it pleases the board, I'll draft a simple.
An agenda?
As Ned did say, John did take and poll the revitalization committee and had no issues. John was here until 8:20, at which point he had to leave. He did make the announcement that he would be here until that time if we could get to him, but.
Some peeking in from fact.
We couldn't.
We didn't.
He was.
But tell him that you reported his comments and they, they swayed the board and the board said yes.
He's watching you on TV, so that's good.
Mr. Chairman, can we adjourn?
Second, can we?
All right, all in favor? Aye, we're adjourned.